Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our December 14th, 2021 Borough Council meeting. Tonight, we are conducting our monthly Borough Council meeting as a hybrid meeting, both live and virtually using the Zoom webinar platform. We are glad you have joined us for this meeting tonight. Participants, both virtually and live, attending tonight's meeting may provide public comment during the public participation and the public hearings portions of the agenda. During these portions of the agenda, please raise your hand, and our staff will unmute your microphone and announce your name. You will then be able to speak. We will have two public comment periods, one towards the beginning and one towards the end. And each public hearing will have its own public comment section. Thank you again for joining us tonight. We will now begin our monthly Borough Council meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance and Moment of Silence. We can begin with roll call.
Ms. Berkeley.
Present.
Mr. Dalton. Ms. Dugan.
Here.
Mr. Kirchner.
Here.
Mr. Moore. Mr. Soto. Mr. Weiss.
Present.
Mr. Ewald.
Here.
Herr Ursler.
Here.
Manager's here, assistance online, lieutenant's here for the chief, and the solicitor's here. And you do have a court.
And we have Mr. Moore sneaking into line.
Mr. Moore sneaking in.
Oh.
And Mr. Dalton.
We got a rush.
You have more than a court.
Welcome, welcome. Okay, with that, we do not have any presentations tonight. So the first item on the agenda, and here's Mr. Soto. We have a full house. With that, we'll open the first round of public participation. Members of the public, if you did not hear my opening announcement, if you're looking to make comment during the first round of public participation, please raise your hand. We will start with folks who are here in the audience tonight. And then after everybody in the audience has had their chance to make their public comment, we will go to folks who are joining us on the Zoom platform. When you step up to the microphone or when you speak to us through Zoom, please remember to state your name and provide your address. With that, Mr. Lutzker.
Thank you. David Lutzker. 243 Morgan Street. And also here as president of the Phoenixville Green Team, representing that organization. On the topic of the Odessa project, I'd like to speak tonight. And I'd like to say that, speaking on behalf of the Green Team, our officers, our board, and our all various affiliate members and other people who are not affiliated with the Green Team, we are all sad to lose any part of a forest that exists within the limits of the borough. That said, we also need to acknowledge that there have been good faith efforts on the part of council to get a better outcome than what was originally suggested by the developer for the residents of the new development and for the community at large. I especially want to acknowledge council members for listening, hearing, representing our interests, doing the reading, asking the questions, returning the emails, investing time to probe, understand, and figure out what can be done in those negotiations. I also want to acknowledge that, to the developer, I would address you by name if I knew it, but didn't have time to do that research, that the owner of the land has the right to develop it and to make a profit from it. Nobody is actually trying to take that away. And what I'm going to ask of the council is, we want to know about your advocacy on our behalf. I know some, because some people have shared, and I've asked questions as well. But there are a lot of other people out there in the community who are interested in knowing what the council does on our behalf. And I've heard, and I can't tell you how many times I've heard it, I know you've heard it, about how this council rolls over for every developer, comes in, let them do whatever they want to do. Now, I know, because I've educated myself, that that's not so accurate. And I also like to remind people that without that development that happened 20 years ago, 15 years ago, 10 years ago, and more recently than that, the borough wouldn't be in the good position that it's in today. That said, I don't know if the public would be privy to know details of negotiations that have happened in the recent past with Odessa project. But I can tell you that we want to know what you've done on our behalf. So to the developer, I'll ask only that that you keep in mind the interests of the future residents of the development and the community at large to preserve the quality of life that we have in the borough today. Thank you.
Yes, hello. My name is Henry Stube Talbier, and I live on St. Mary Street, 338. And it's about the proposal of the application of the Firebird Festival. It says on it that the street would be closed from 12 to 10:00. Our festival first starts at 5:00 o'clock. And we have all, we've told all the vendors to come, please come in before 4:00 o'clock. So it would, it doesn't make sense to close the street already at 12:00 o'clock. And a lot of people leave quite late. Most people leave around 11:00 o'clock. So if it could be instead of from 4:00 to 11:00 instead of, that would be a wonderful amendment to that. And since it is a new application, my first one was considering only 500 people. And since it's a new one, would it be possible to raise that number? I don't know what that number is, but maybe 1,000 or... But that's, that's among you two that is solved, but decided. But I would love that to be higher. Because after all, I mean, 500 people is going to look like nothing out in that field. And it's outside, and so, thank you.
Good evening. It's nice to actually be here in person. Thank you for this opportunity. I'm here this evening to express my ongoing concern about the land development plan for 34 South Main Street. Despite some improvements to the original plan, made only because our residents in our surrounding neighborhoods pursue channels to address the problematic aspects affecting the quality of life for future tenants of the building as well as neighbors, I have some serious concerns. I would first like to say that each neighborhood is an ecosystem of people who live cooperatively through our network of relationships. For a community to thrive, there must be mutual respect for and interest in the welfare of our neighbors. A sustaining physical and social infrastructure in balance with the scale and needs of community residents is vital. With that in mind, I believe the density of apartment units is too great. Under the current plan, 22 units with only about 400 square feet of space are crammed into a building which offers little common space for tenants inside and none outside the building. For comparison, average density of existing residential units surrounding 34 South Main Street is 56 to 69 units per acre. Merchant lofts across the street has a density of 57 units per acre. Phoenix Village has a density of 38 units per acre. In contrast, the proposed 22 apartments would create density of 157 dwelling units per acre, resulting in density two to three times greater than existing downtown development. I'm also not reassured by the provisions currently in place for tenants who need parking. Planners have indicated that they have a lease for parking spaces, but that this lease cannot be guaranteed into the future. Then it said the option to purchase a permit for the Prospect Street Lot at $25 a year, but that's added cost for persons with modest resources. And the permits are only as good as the degree to which they are enforced. I can tell you from personal experience, the parking enforcement is not consistently carried out in our neighborhood. Consequently, for a neighborhood already very densely occupied with intense competition for parking among neighbors as well as visitors, the struggle will become worse if additional neighbors also have vehicles. Finally, the owners of 34 South Main Street have indicated that many, if not all tenants, will be participants in the VASH voucher program for veterans, which provides rental assistance for vouchers for privately owned housing to veterans who are experiencing homelessness. According to the HUD website, VA case managers may connect these veterans with support services such as healthcare, mental health treatment, and substance abuse counseling to help them in their recovery process and with their ability to maintain housing in the community. Although the land development stage does not address this facet of the VASH program, should this plan progress, I strongly urge council members to press for accountability, ensuring that VASH voucher tenants have direct and ongoing access to support services that give veterans their best shot at successfully living in our community. In closing, I want to state that I am not opposed to thoughtful development of the 34 South Main Street property. I say this because in conversations at meetings I have attended, I feel neighbors who have raised our concerns have sometimes been characterized as adversarial. This is most unfortunate because the stance overlooks the fact that we care very much about our neighborhood and our community. To discount our concerns is to lose valuable opportunity for our input. Input that has already resulted in a revised plan that provides for improved management of trash, consideration of parking for tenants, and a plan that begins to better address the needs of a tenant living in the designated handicapped accessible unit. I urge you not to approve the current plan based on the concerns expressed here. Our veterans deserve better, and our current residents and neighborhoods' businesses deserve better. Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience tonight wishing to make any?
My name is Janice M. Swar. You guys will have no idea how hard this is for me, because usually I would be singing and dancing for you. I'm not singing and dancing now. Much has already been written regarding the proposed conversion of 34 South Main Street to high-density subsidized housing. This, once again, addresses my strong conviction that this endeavor endangers the health and welfare of the veterans who will be living there as well as the surrounding community. From the very beginning, nothing was ever presented in clear-cut, definitive fashion by the new owners addressing health, safety, and welfare. Only a poorly planned out scope of how the building would be physically cannibalized into warehousing, originally 24, now 22 tiny apartments for subsidized housing. Nothing regarding onsite assistance, no one to minister to their needs. In short, no resident services plan, all caps and bold. After all of the health, safety, and quality of life issues had to be brought up by concerned neighbors and citizens, we are all totally aware that the current borough ordinances surrounding health, safety, and quality of life are weak or nonexistent at best. However, this proposed development will house an already sadly underserved population while they transition to hopefully independent living one day. A property manager is not sufficient, as this would only entail, for instance, fixing the heater or air conditioning or replacing a broken light switch or plumbing repairs. From the onset, this entire undertaking has been rushed through the planning commission and passed off onto Borough Council before the human services issues could be properly vetted and clarified. Normally, yes, an outspoken cheerleader for Phoenixville. Now, as a taxpayer and concerned citizen, I need Borough Council to prove to me and all of us for that matter that quality of life and humane treatment of this already under-stirred population will exist. It is tragic that the residents who live here, the backbone of this community, who have raised their families here, have become secondary to outside big business investors. It is also noteworthy and landmark, all caps and bold, that the Friends of Church Street not only united but retained legal assistance, or I should say, had to retain legal assistance, and won several advantages for the proposed residents and surrounding neighbors. Better location of the trash, an elevator for them, and much improvements regarding the ADA unit. Shame on the investors for not providing this in detail in the first place. And more than that, shame on any Borough Council member who approved any proposal to date without demanding more attention be paid to the human services needs of the residents, whether this exists in the codes or not. Rest assured that from this point forward, I will consistently work to assure this type of coding will be in place so others do not have to go through this. I have no idea how to do it, but this will not stop me. Consider that, by the way, not a threat. Consider that a sacred promise. I have no political ax to grain whatsoever, no agenda, nor do I have a business to protect that I'll be boycotted with, or do I ever fear unpopularity as I press forward on this all-important issue? I cannot praise our borough relationship publicly or privately at this time. Any of you who have to date supported this are doing nothing but display to this community and beyond that quality of life is not your top priority. We are now hearing this from a loud chorus of residents throughout this borough who came here to live and are now objecting to the intrusion of high-density opportunists. I also cannot ignore my extensive involvement in 12-step recovery programs for drug and alcohol use. For over four decades, I have heard far too many stories from veterans who come home from the horrors of war and are struggling to overcome these addictions and lead clean-cut lives. To place these dear individuals in such close quarters with no one on site to minister to their needs is both negligent and criminal, whether there are codes to enforce it or not. To date, this is all a black mark on Phoenixville's history and an embarrassment to this community at large. The fabric of trust has been badly, badly torn. I challenge every one of you to do the next right thing.
Anyone else in the audience tonight wishing to make a public comment? If not, we'll switch over to our Zoom participants. Seeing none, we'll switch over. Jen, if there's, if you can bring them in one at a time.
Mr. Felton, I've turned on your microphone.
My name is Bill Felton. I'm principal with the William James Group. And we own several properties on Main Street and Church Street in the vicinity of the proposed project at 34 Main Street. I'd just like to say I share the concerns of the previous two speakers who spoke about this property, particularly the social services aspect of, and the support that the tenants might receive there. And, you know, also the domestic services concerning the location of this property, such as grocery shopping and that sort of thing. But, but I'm here tonight, myself, to talk about the, the a request that if this is approved, there'd be a contingency that the applicant developer be required to remove all the fire escapes from the exterior of the building and provide a second means of egress from within the footprint of the building. I'm making this request for several reasons. One, this would improve the aesthetic of the exterior of the property. The second reason is this is a safety issue. The first concern would be the residents trying to get onto the fire escape, i.e. during a storm or some other extreme weather event. And just negotiating the stairs of a fire escape is a challenge. The second concern there is the condition of the fire escape and the potential for heavy steel pieces falling to pedestrians on the sidewalk below. There is a footprint within the layout of the proposed plan where an interior stairway could be constructed. I believe if the developer considers the cost to build an interior stair system versus the cost to bring the current fire escape to code and to structural integrity and the potential savings on liability insurance, it may be more prudent to go with the interior stair system. Thank you.
Dr. Senek, I've turned on your microphone. Dr. Senek, we can't hear you, sir, if you're speaking.
Go on, circle back to him and go on to the next one.
Dr. Senek, I'll come back to you at the end, hold on. Christine, I've turned on your microphone.
Yes, good evening. My name is Christine Emmerich. My husband, Mitchell, my son, Austin, and my daughter, Lucille, we live at 101 Elton Drive here in Phoenixville. We live at the corner as you enter in off of Pot House Road onto Ross Lane, then a quick right onto Elton Drive. Our backyard, the other side of our fence, backs up to what I like to call the Pot House Speedway. I first want to begin by thanking the borough and the police department for approving and implementing stop signs on Ross Lane and for posting no truck signs and for lowering the speed limit on Ross Lane. These safety measures have helped. However, there are still some that run the stop signs and do not abide by the new speed limit. My other concerns tonight have to do with the safety of my property and the property of my neighbor located at 1124 Ross Lane. We are both located at the corners of Ross and Pot House Road. As you might be aware, there was a multi-vehicle car accident on Sunday night on Pot House Road. The one vehicle ended up going up the embankment of my neighbor's property at 1124 Ross Lane and hitting her house. Unfortunately, this was not the first time a vehicle ended up on her property this year. Back in August, an impaired driver drove her vehicle up on my neighbor's property on the front lawn. As a resident and a mother who has lived here in Phoenixville since 2007, I have watched the traffic speed up and down Pot House Road. There have been quite a few accidents and close calls resulting in tire screaming and horns blasting. When my children were younger, I always feared for them going out in the backyard for fear someone would lose control of their vehicle and come through our fence and into our yard. Sunday night proved that this can be done, that someone can lose control of their vehicle on Pot House Road and end up on your property, as with our neighbor's property, on Sunday night, and run into your home. I am thankful she was not hurt. Furthermore, our property has been affected as well. In the past, a vehicle lost control and came onto our side yard, which is Ross and Elton, broke through the front fence and kept going. And another time, I called the police and a report was made because the property damage was actually borough property. It was the lamppost at the corner of Elton and Ross. It was knocked down completely. It lay on the sidewalk with wires exposed. The sidewalk, which we are responsible for removing, snow. So I called the police, a report was made. And also, the Comcast hub that is on our property was also hit. The officer that came out that time said that the tracks appeared, that the driver was making a left turn from Pot House Road onto Ross Lane. So this leads me to the problem that I have observed over the years. Cars come speeding into our development from either making a right or left turn onto Ross Lane from Pot House Road for making a, or for making a quick cut across Pot House Road from Evergreen Road. I propose and would like to see a four-way stop put at this intersection. This will help to slow the traffic down on Pot House Road and make for slower turns and transitions into our development onto Ross Lane. This would also do away with the right turn lane from Pot House onto Ross Lane that is on the other side of our fence. This would also make landscaping, snow removal, and leaf removal for us safer. Furthermore, it is also impossible and dangerous to make a left turn from Ross Lane onto Pot House Road during peak traffic hours. In order to make this turn, you need to see what is coming down, or should I say speeding down, Pot House Road. And it's difficult to see what is coming. There are also cars and delivery vehicles that park on Ross Lane. When vehicles turn in from Pot House Road, this is a blind turn. And if anything is parked here, they are at risk of getting hit because of limited visibility. Finally, along with a four-way stop, I would like to see guardrails put around the corners of our property and our neighbor's property at 1124 Ross Lane to act as a buffer and protection against vehicles that are possibly, that would possibly lose control on Pot House Road as they turn into our development onto Ross Lane. We get a lot of traffic, and I mean a lot of traffic, coming into our development from Pot House Road. Many, unfortunately, use our development as a bypass, as an easy way to get to 113. Many unfortunately use our development as a bypass, as an easy way to get to 113. I would like to see our development continue to become safer. I think by adding guardrails and a four-way stop, these are necessary, and I think we need to slow down this traffic on Pot House Road, as well as all the traffic that enters in and from Pot House Road onto Ross Lane. I do not, do not want to witness another event like Sunday night. I do not want to further see, to see further damage done to my neighbor's property or to mine. I also do not want to see anything worse happen, such as loss of life. My daughter rides her bike and takes daily runs in our neighborhood. She also brings a few of the neighborhood children over to our yard to play in our backyard. This is a development of people, young and old. We want our development, our community, our home safe. We don't want our development to become the Pot House Speedway or the 113 bypass. I thank you. I sincerely thank you for your time. I know that this time is crazy with a lot of holiday festivities and preparations. So I do thank you for your time. I ask, ask that you consider these things I have mentioned. And I, and I wish you, and may all of you have a joyous holiday season. Thank you.
Mrs. Hilli, I've turned on your microphone.
Hello. I want to address this ordinance. Do I do that now or wait for the ordinance to come up into public hearing?
You can participate for public participation for the hearing for the ordinance during the hearing of the ordinance. This would be for when you have comment regarding other items on the agenda.
All right, then I will wait for the public hearing.
Thank you, Mrs. Hilli.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Gracie, I've turned on your microphone.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
First, I have some comments about 34 South Main. I, in agreement with many of the other comments already presented, I think Ginger Murphy provided a really great overview of the density that this development represents in this neighborhood, with it being two to three times as dense as the existing development in this area. And I, I really think that everyone needs to think about that. And that's a lot, that's a really dense proposed development. We also think, or I also think, that the conditions of approval in the resolution proposed tonight are really not adequate to protect the neighbors. In particular, there's no language specifying that the future residents are ineligible for parking passes in the Zone A parking area on the streets. And the language relating to parking leases to be provided at the time of use and occupancy permit are really inadequate. They have no specific criteria. It really leaves too much discretion to staff. The plan should not be approved until there is an acceptable parking alternative for the future residents of this development. There's also inadequate justification for the waivers, particularly the historic aspect of the environmental impact analysis. As was pointed out, the fire escapes along the outside of the building, there really could be a lot more analysis on the exterior of this building. Also, the traffic impact study, we all know that, that parking and traffic are a problem, and that waiver really should not be granted. In addition, I want to point out that Borough Council has the power to negotiate with developers when waivers are being requested. So when we hear Borough Council members saying, "My hands are tied, we can't do anything." You can. You are in charge. It's not your staff. They advise you, but, but you have power. I've seen it elsewhere. I'd love to see it here. Section 22-400 of the subdivision land development allows Borough Council to require standards in excess of the minimum requirements if warranted due to unique characteristics of a property, of a particular property, or if it's in the best interest of the health, safety, and welfare of the public. I think you've heard a lot of comments from previous speakers that could really justify some of these additional requirements. Section 22-402.3 states that the proposed developments shall be coordinated with existing nearby neighborhoods so that the community as a whole may develop in a coordinated fashion. That has not happened. In fact, you know, it's probably been the opposite. So those are some of my concerns about the development that's before you tonight. You know, I'm sure you're still going to approve it, but I really wish that Borough Council would understand that you have a lot more power than you've been told you have. Moving on to Odessa, I, I think it's incredibly unfortunate that you're not finding that this plan is substantially different than the other plan. I understand that the zoning officer is saying that the stacked townhomes are another variation of multifamily dwellings, and I understand that. But I also understand the traffic circulation differs now. The unit composition and layout differs from the original plan, and the potential impact of the proposed units on the surrounding property owners differs from the original plan. And for those reasons, at a minimum, you could send this development back and make it subject to current standards or hold them to their original layout. In fact, I was contacted by the manager of another municipality who asked what was going on in Phoenixville? Why in the world would the Borough accept such changes to this plan? And I couldn't, I couldn't answer it. So I, I just don't understand. So those are my comments about the developments on the agenda tonight. I would also like to make a comment about the budget. At the last meeting, I thought I heard that a truck is proposed for parking staff downtown to help them get around to the parking areas. And I would request that the Borough consider an electric vehicle, since it's probably going to be idling downtown, and an electric vehicle would make a lot of sense. Thank you.
Thank you. Laura, I've turned on your microphone.
Thank you. Good evening. I, my name is Laura Mataford, and I live on the Potter Road. I'm here again to oppose, to oppose the Odessa project as proposed. First, I have been coming here since 2015 to oppose the use of Ashburn Road to cross the trail and connect to this development. I want to bring to attention, correcting a comment that was made in the previous Borough Council meeting, that the entire Fillmore Village parcel was needed to, to the Fillmore Village Plan Community Association in July 2020. Ashburn Road ends before the Fillmore Village property lines, which is a private community. There are two egresses for this development via Township Line Road and Fillmore Street. Ashburn Road is not needed and creates a significant risk for those in the Fillmore Village and everyone who utilizes the trail. I again bring to your attention, there are already a significant number of road crossings the, acrossing this SRT, and adding another one that is only 120 steps from Fillmore and SRT is completely unacceptable. I also urge you that if you allow this development to continue to remove the use of it, to remove any use and connection of Ashburn Road. Again, there's no need for it. There's some property issues associated with it. But also vacating this road will allow the developer to actually utilize that space at that end of the development to create more green space. And if I read that tree map correctly, then he could retain potentially that 60-inch maple and the 42-inch cherry, which would help satisfy what some of the other people have been asking here tonight and may show some good faith on that developer. I also ask that the Borough Council require that the developer really thoroughly address how this impact, how this development will impact those surrounding properties. In the original plan, there were only four buildings, and it appeared to be much more green space included in the actual parcel. In these revised plans, the amount of building coverage has significantly increased. The green space has been reduced and is now mainly on that old railway land and is not the original forest land. The original plan also called for three stormwater basins, and now there's only one. This removal of this forest is going to create an environmental impact. So please ensure that there's going to be adequate stormwater remediation because that is up above multiple communities. It's going to impact us. Please also have the developer address what is the purpose of this commercial space that's being added to this area? It was not in the original plan, and it's unclear what the intent is to do to add commercial space up in this section of the Borough. Please, I again ask you to protect and act on, for the interests of the actual residents of the Borough and not for the developer. Thank you.
Thank you. Greg, I've turned on your microphone.
Thank you. Good evening, Council. Thank you for your time and what you do for us. My name is Greg Ritter. I am a Borough resident. I am a Fillmore Village resident. I live on Ashburn Road. Yes, we've, as Laura has just said, we've, we've been watching this for years. And the main thing I wanted to bring to attention this evening, similar to what Laura had brought up, this is personal property. This is private property. It's not Borough property. There, I don't believe that the current plan can be approved giving, giving the developer access and use of our personal property. I just don't understand how that, I don't think that should go through. I do understand that that was what was going to be the Northern Relief Route, which I'm understanding is no longer going to be. And I vote this evening goes so far as to return the grant for it. So if the Borough were to take Ashburn and to maintain it, snowplow and all that for the sole purpose, not for public use, not for the public benefit, but for developer benefit, I don't think that would be a wise decision of the Borough to make as well. So I just want to reiterate that, you know, we have private property up here. I don't think we can approve a plan that shows connection to our private property. I guarantee you, we all oppose it. Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. Elaine, I've turned on your microphone.
Good evening. This is Elaine Reimer on Ross Lane. I'm here tonight to lend my support to my neighbor Christine who spoke earlier. I've been involved from the beginning. Thank you for doing the stop signs on Ross Lane and the no truck signs and reducing the speeding. In some ways, it's helped our development, but other ways, it just continues on. The no truck signs really made a difference. We have very few commercial vehicles cutting through now. So thank you. That was a good majority of the traffic. I live one house down from the stop sign that was just installed. I never knew that stop signs were an option. I can't believe how many times a day I see cars come through, start to hit their brakes, and then just drive through that stop sign like they don't need to stop. I've seen the police come through the last two or three days now. More, there was one yesterday sitting out after the accident that happened Sunday night right by the stop signs. I would like to ask, and I don't know whether this is now a police matter and it doesn't go before Council, that if the police could, I know you have a lot of area to cover, but if the police could make regular drive-throughs through here and periodically sit at that stop sign to give a message to these people that they're not to run stop signs, that I, I just blows my mind that they don't think they have to stop. And we've had neighbors that have sat on Ivory Road, coming out, waiting to return, starting to turn out onto Pot House and almost got clipped because someone decided they weren't going to stop for that stop sign. And we appreciate everything you did so far for us, and really, I do. I know everything takes time to get things through, but we need a little bit more help here. We need you guys to come in and enforce this because it's only going to get worse for us when that new development, Eland Point, goes through. There's going to be over 200 cars a day. That's going to probably cut through this development. And we're not a main road. We're a road inside a development. We shouldn't have the amount of traffic we have. We have traffic like you have on Pot House Road, traffic like you have on 113, just a little side street in a development. So I would ask you if you, if there's anything else you can do to help us and protect us and protect our children and our property because we've had so much property damage. And I mean, we're, you know, I told my neighbor that her house was hit. Make sure when you speak to your insurance company that they're aware that this has been an ongoing issue, that we've had problems with speeding and, you know, what, what has gone on because none of us were doing that. We were just calling our insurance companies and reporting it. So I'm hoping that you continue to work with all of us and help to make our neighborhoods safe because we're, we are, you know, house-wise, we are small. We're 31 single homes. But we have over 100 and some townhouses in this immediate development. We have a lot of children that use this main road, Ross. They ride their bikes. Like my neighbor said, her daughter is out on her bike at least two or three times a day. We have younger families moving in as older families are deciding to move, you know, to a smaller place and move on. So we need you to help protect our children and our property. I thank you for your time, and I do really appreciate, appreciate all the time and effort you put in here to try to help us. And I was hoping tonight, I was actually planning on just coming on and thanking you for everything you've done. But we had another incident on Sunday night and, you know, just by the grace of God, you know, it didn't go through her house, that the fence stopped it and her air conditioning unit stopped it from going in through her family room. So again, thank you for your time, and I appreciate it.
Thank you. Mr. Clem, I've turned on your microphone. Mark, your microphone's been turned on. You just need to unmute yourself.
Sorry about that. This is Mark Clem. Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Very good. Thank you. Yeah, I represent the owner of 920 Township Line Road, the Moose Lodge property, which is, shares a common boundary with the Odessa property. And as you may know, that on our property, on the 920 Township Line Road property, we do have the racetrack, the mini midget racing. And especially in the summers, there's a lot of activity there and a lot of kids who are on the site. And the concern is that, and there's a lot of cars that pull in, and there's a parking lot back there. And so there's a lot of vehicle traffic that goes back to that oval that's in the rear of the property. So my request would be that the Borough require the developer to install a six-foot-high PVC stockade fence along the entire property line on their property, basically to protect children from the Odessa development or from our development, from, actually mainly for the Odessa development, from crossing over, which would otherwise be very easy for them to do, into that roadway that, that leads to the parking lot at the rear. It would provide a visual barrier, but also a, and a very important safety barrier. And I think a little announcement prevention would create a very significant savings in terms of safety and for the, for the people using that, that oval in the rear. So anyway, you know, other than that, you know, I'm sure the Borough will make sure the developer does everything they're supposed to do with regard to stormwater so it doesn't, because our, our property is below the Odessa property. So hopefully, the post-development stormwater conditions are no worse than the pre, pre-development conditions. I'm sure that'll be monitored. But anyway, primary concern is that safety fence on the Odessa property. If you would require the developer to install that, we would greatly appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Wagner, I've turned on your microphone.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, please state your.
I live on 40 Grant Street in Phoenixville. That's the last block of Grant. It's the one-way street. I had an issue that I thought was resolved about five to 10 years ago. The fact that they cannot raise the tar any higher than it now is, or water will go through my front door and off my house office. and off my house office foundation, let alone go down my driveway and destroy my driveway and my backyard. It was resolved by them milling the road on either side and then tarring, but they got a new manhole cover at the end of the block that's six to eight inches above the tar. And if they tar to that height, they were going to destroy my home. And we've been in it 30 some years. It was built in the 1800s. It used to be the buyer's store. Can you help me?
Mr. Wagner, thank you for your comments. At this time, it's just public comment. So your comments have been recorded for the record and someone will get back to you.
Yes, someone from the streets department, I hope.
I can't say, sir, but thank you for your comments. Did you have anything else?
Before, and they were very congenial and that's what I want to do. I want to resolve it before it becomes an issue. Thank you. Thank you very much for hearing me out.
Thank you.
This point, we'll close the first round of public participation. I mistakenly skipped over item three, so we will jump backwards one item here and call for the approval of meeting minutes. We have both the regular meeting minutes for November 9, as well as our special meeting minutes of November 22. What is council's pleasure?
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to approve both sets of meeting minutes.
Second. Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Weiss. Questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries eight zero. Now we're back on track. We will go to council communications and council participation. Any updates or comments from anybody on council? I would just like to say that I do appreciate all the work the Public Works Department has been doing. I have not received any complaints on leaf pickup this year. And it's been tremendous to, I know we're all short-staffed, so it's been quite appreciated, all the work they have gotten done. Mr. Kirk, are you had something?
Yes, I, I just wanted to note to Mr. Wagner on East Grant Street there that if he would like to follow up with me with regard to his issue. And I'm sure the borough staff made note of it this evening anyway, but but I, I just didn't want him to think that his concern was being disregarded. Thank you, Mr. President.
Absolutely. And, and as a reminder to everybody in the public, all of our contact information and direct emails is available on the borough website. So you are able to reach out to your appropriate council person directly through our website. Any other updates from council or communications? With that, we'll jump into the mayor's report. Mr. Urschler.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. Everyone, thank you so much for being here this evening. I have a very short report. And that is just to say thank you. Thank you to all of the people who serve, certainly all of our elected officials. Thank you to all of the volunteers on our boards and commissions, to our police department, to our EMS, of course, to our incredible borough staff, our professional staff that we have here that work out of certainly this building and all of the buildings that we have around the borough. Our incredible streets department, of course, led by Mr. Brian Watson, our rec department, everyone who has touched the borough in some way or another, thank you so much for what you do every single day. As we know from our conversations tonight, it's never easy. The decisions that have to be made certainly are never easy, but we are always able to find common ground and to treat each other with respect. And I think that's what really makes Phoenixville a very special place to live. So thank you, especially thank you to all of our residents and to all the people who entrust our community to your elected officials. And thank you for being here. Thank you for being part of this community and making it a place where every single person is safe, they're celebrated and they are loved. Looking forward to a very exciting 2022, and I will bring my time back to you, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Sorry, a happy holidays to you, whatever holiday you or your family may celebrate, a very, very happy holidays and Merry Christmas to you also. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. We do not have any appointments this evening for any boards or commissions, any members of the public that are interested in joining a board or commission. We do have an updated list that's kept up to date on our website. Where you can feel free to reach out to borough staff or your borough council person about upcoming vacancies that may be occurring. With that, that brings us to our new business section of tonight's agenda. What is council's pleasure for discussion on the Firebird Festival?
Take two. I'll make a motion to consider the temporary community event application for Firebird Festival at Veterans Park on Saturday, December 18. From 4:00 PM to 10:00 PM with the streets closers in Marrow Road between St. Mary's and North Ridge Drive from 12 to 10:00 PM.
Second. Motion by Mr. Soto, second by Mr. Dalton. Questions or comments on the item as was presented during public participation? I think we could also defer to staff on the timing of it. I don't know the exact timing or what the streets department and police department need to do to set up. So I imagine there's rationale to the to the timing, but we also make sure that any vendors are able to get in and out as needed, of course. So leave it to the police department to establish any timing, if that's okay with the motion maker.
Yeah, I'll amend my motion. I'll, I'll be more clear. I'll amend my motion to leave the timing up to the chief of police.
Great.
Mr.
Could, could I, we, as staff, if you would add to your motion that we're okay with going up to 1,000 people?
Yeah, I'd like to amend this motion to add one, up to 1,000 people.
Okay, so we have a motion and, well, we have a motion amendment and a motion amendment seconded. So any other, so discussion on the motion for bumping Firebird to this weekend? Any other comments or questions? Great. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero one with Ms. Berkeley abstaining. I was on top of that.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Westler Pearlstein LLP as borough solicitor beginning January 1, 2022.
Second. We have a motion by Ms. Berkeley. Mr. Dalton got it by a hair. Questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight zero. Next up, we have, see, this would also be Beth.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to consider the appointment of employment agreement for chief of police effective January 1, 2022.
Second. Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Dalton. Questions on this motion? I guess this is making it formal. Ms. Kirkner.
Do we, do we have this in our packet? I didn't see it there.
I don't believe we put the actual contract in the packet.
There was a letter. There was a letter that went out, right?
I'm not sure that it went to everybody.
Let's go to committee, maybe?
Right, committee.
Yeah, so, yeah, in, in committee, we approved the, the contract the employment agreement. Right, and police personnel, public safety. Yeah.
But I, I have no idea what it is, so.
Fair point.
How can, I don't know how I can vote on it. From Missouri, show me.
I mean, I'm with Mr. Kirk now on this. I, I didn't get a copy of it either.
Could we? Could we go to executive session and come back to vote on it? Or even if we, do we want to bump it to the end? Or do we want to do that?
My recommendation, based on that, I would recommend that you reserve time at the end to go into personal matters or, and then.
Mr. President, once, once the contract is approved, it becomes a public record.
Of course. So do we need to table this in order to take it into exec? Or do we simply?
Yeah, just move it to the end of the meeting.
Okay, we're going to move this to the end of the meeting and have executive session to cover this beforehand. So with that, we'll move on to item D of new business.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to consider scheduling and advertising the 2022 meetings.
New business.
Sorry, I got a.
We're all just jumping around tonight.
Yep, yep, all over the place, man. I'd like to make a motion to consider staff recommendations to send a notification of termination to PennDOT regarding the MTF grant.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Weiss, second by Ms. Berkeley. Questions on this motion? Mr. Kirkner?
Could we please have an explanation of what this is, just for the education of the public?
Yep.
Thank you.
Sure. As has been alluded by, by several of the folks earlier this evening, and certainly for quite a number of years with Borough Council, we applied for and received a $1.2 million grant from the multimodal transportation fund to do what is commonly referred to as the northern relief route or the Ashburn extension. And that, that hit several different kinds of roadblocks for different reasons that I wouldn't go into the weeds on that particular issue, but it became abundantly clear as the developer was pursuing the Odessa project that they had an opportunity to, to move traffic through their project without the necessity of the northern relief route. And they, over the course of time, have actually, as you will see in the plans tonight, have made that happen. With that, it gave us an opportunity, staff, to recognizing that it was probable that that road was not going to happen, that we were going to ask the PennDOT to allow us to transfer those funds to the intersection of Star and Bridge Street and create a four-way intersection there and, and revise that location for a better flow of traffic and what have you. And in fact, the borough acquired the property that needed to do that. Everybody agrees that that is the right thing to do, PennDOT included. The difficulty is that there's always a thing called state statute, and the statute for the MTF, multimodal transportation fund, would not allow, because they are competitive process, it would not allow PennDOT to transfer those funds, even though it's a great project, to the Star and Bridge Street intersection. And so that was, that was denied to us. With that denial and recognizing the Odessa project, at that point in time, it became a clear that we weren't going to be able to use those funds. What was the next best step? Reaching back in and talking with Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission and PennDOT, we, we made a decision that it was best to terminate the grant and, and not use those funds and then be in position to apply straightforward with the Virgin-Star Street intersection for future multimodal transportation funds or the project that we have on Mari Road for MTF or the project that we have on Fillmore for MTF. Council will decide that separately, but at this juncture, it is, it is in good faith that we return the funds to the MTF program. And that puts us back in good graces with a, a future grant opportunity. So I mean, that's the, that's the gist of it. I hope I've characterized it for everybody correctly.
Any follow-up questions? Any, any other questions or comments on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight zero. Item E.
I'll make a motion to, to schedule and advertise the 2022 meeting minutes of Borough Council, various boards, commissions and committees.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Weiss. Questions on the advertising of this year's minute? Yes.
I got a couple of things here. Number one, in the thing here, there's no, like, little number three about the change of time in meeting for finance. And I was actually going to say that I'm not sure that we need to do that anymore.
That is why we didn't put it there.
Really? Are we actually just going to change it? Like, like, no one asked me if that was cool, so I didn't know that was coming.
We've, you've been running succinct meetings, so I didn't think there was a need to do the flip-flop.
All right, because I was talking to Monica and we had decided that was the way to go. You know, we're just.
One less asterisk.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other questions or comments on this year's, on this year's municipal meeting dates for 22? Okay, seeing, seeing no questions, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight zero.
Just, just on that, because of, we start out the year, we, we have a couple of close calls. We have the police personnel and public safety meeting at 6 o'clock on January 3 in here. At the same time, next door, they will have the civil service commission's reorganization meeting. And then we come back over to here, we stick around and for the 7 o'clock Borough Council reorganization meeting. So we got a little gymnastics for about an hour, but we'll, we'll make it work and Ms. Logan's got the calendar all set up for, for everybody. So just want to make sure that everybody, we got a couple of things happening very quickly, 1st January 3.
That'll be fun. Okay, and with that, we have our general fund and enterprise fund budgets. What is council's pleasure?
I'll make a motion to approve the 2022 general fund and enterprise budgets.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Dugan, second by Mr. Weiss. Questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight zero. Onto resolutions on tonight's agenda. What is council's pleasure?
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution acknowledging Jeremy Dalton for his eight years of service on Borough Council. Second.
Motion by Mr. Soto, second by Ms. Dugan, by seniority sake. Questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero one, just for perfunctory. With that, I will read into the minutes our resolution for Mr. Dalton. A resolution by the council of the borough of Phoenixville, Chester County, Pennsylvania, acknowledging Jeremy Dalton for his eight years of service on Borough Council. Whereas Jeremy Dalton has served honorably as councilman of the East Ward since January 6, 2014. And whereas Jeremy Dalton has served as poly, policy committee chairman since the January 6, 2014. And whereas Jeremy Dalton completes his term of office, serving two, two terms as East Ward Councilman this coming January 3. And whereas Jeremy Dalton's participation in the affairs of the borough government has provided invaluable service to the East Ward and the community as a whole. And whereas Borough Council wishes to express its appreciation to Jeremy Dalton for his public service, now therefore be it resolved, and it is hereby resolved by the Borough Council of the Borough of Phoenixville, that Jeremy Dalton is recognized and publicly acknowledged for his efforts to provide for the efficient and effective government, which is responsive to the needs of the citizens.
I haven't prepared anything, but I will say it has been a privilege and an honor to serve this community.
Jeremy, I appreciate all the work that you've put in and it's been, it's been a lot of fun working with you over the last, you know, six and eight years that we've worked together and we've gotten a lot of awesome projects done. So I do appreciate all the time and effort that you've put into it. We all know how much energy it takes to, to do this, especially for eight years, so.
And we got the dumpsters, right? The dumpsters.
Dumpsters, dumpsters are coming.
We've got the dumpsters that come.
Okay, moving on to our next resolution. What is council's pleasure?
Mr. President, I make a motion that council approve a resolution acknowledging Usha Rani Nagandi for her eight years of service on the beautification advisory committee.
We have a motion by Mr. Kirkner, second by Mr. Soto. Questions on the motion?
I just want to add, you know, her son is Kevin Nagandi, the ESPN anchor. And before, when I met her, she said her name and I said, oh, are you in a relation to the guy on ESPN? Thinking, no, no, no way. Sure enough, yeah.
She called your bluff. With that, any other questions or comments on the motion? Mr. Soto?
I'll just add that she probably finished that by telling you how proud she is of Phoenixville and her son graduated. and her son graduating Phoenixville and a very active, a very proud resident of Phoenixville. So I'm glad to acknowledge her tonight.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight zero, and with that, I will read into the record a resolution. "A resolution of gratitude for the public service of Usha Nagandi as a member of the Beautification Advisory Commission for the borough of Phoenixville, Chester County, Pennsylvania. Whereas Usha Nagandi served diligently and honorably as an original member of the Beautification Advisory Commission from September 10th, 2013 through October 27th, 2021. And whereas Ms. Nagandi helps guide the Beautification Advisory Commission towards launching several programs and initiatives to improve areas of borough, areas of the borough through a mural arts program and spearheading numerous improvements in landscaping throughout the borough. And whereas Ms. Nagandi provided invaluable and dedicated service to the Beautification Advisory Commission and was instrumental in guiding the commission towards its goals for beautification throughout the borough. And whereas Borough Council wishes to express its most sincere gratitude and appreciation to Usha Nagandi for all of her efforts and commitment to the borough in performing her dedicated responsibilities over the past eight years, now therefore be it resolved by the Borough Council of the Borough of Phoenixville that Usha Nagandi is recognized and publicly acknowledged for her commitment and efforts in performing her duties and further there does wish her their best wishes in her future endeavors." And we will make sure this is sent to Ms. Nagandi. What is council's pleasure for our third resolution of the evening?
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to approve the resolution acknowledging Fire Chief John Buckwalter for his 36 years of service in the Phoenixville Fire Department.
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Weiss, questions on the motion? This is for John Buckwalter, who's retiring as chief, but I think he's still going to possibly stick around for a little while. Any questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries seven zero with Mr. Dalton out of the room. With that, I will read into the record the resolution for Chief John Buckwalter. "A resolution by the council of the borough of Phoenixville, Chester County, Pennsylvania, acknowledging John Buckwalter for his service as the fire chief for the Phoenixville Fire Department. Whereas Chief John Buckwalter first joined West End Fire Company Number Three in 1985 and became a firefighter and emergency medical technician at the age of 16. And whereas, as a volunteer firefighter, EMT, Chief Buckwalter spent countless hours responding to emergency calls and transmitting, or sorry, transporting the sick and injured residents and visitors of the borough, Phoenixville, and its surrounding communities. And whereas Chief Buckwalter first entered into the leadership role as lieutenant with West End Fire Company Number Three and has held virtually every rank within the department. Whereas John Buckwalter was appointed fire chief by Borough Council in 2012 and served most honorably until his resignation effective this December 31st, 2021. And whereas Borough Council wishes to express their great appreciation to Chief Buckwalter for his public service and dedication to the residents of Phoenixville and surrounding area. Now therefore be it resolved, and it is hereby resolved by the Borough Council of the Borough of Phoenixville, that Chief John Buckwalter is recognized and publicly acknowledged for his dedication and leadership, not only in our community, but also on a regional basis in regards to emergency management. I know Chief Buckwalter is actually working tonight at his day job as a flight nurse for Penn. As a firefighter myself, I really do appreciate all the work that he's put in in helping us transition the fire department from the combination station that it has been to now a new fire station. And next month, we'll be swearing in our new full-time fire chief. So I really do appreciate everything that John has done for us on the volunteer basis over the last four decades."
Mr. President, I would like to make a motion to approve the resolution acknowledging Police Chief Thomas Sostrom for his 32 years of service in the Phoenixville Police Department.
We have a motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Dalton. Questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries eight zero. And with that, I will read into our resolution for Chief Sostrom. "A resolution by the council of the borough of Phoenixville, Chester County, Pennsylvania, acknowledging Thomas Sostrom for his service as the police chief for the Phoenixville Police Department. Whereas Chief Thomas Sostrom first joined the Phoenixville Police Department in 1989 as a patrolman. And whereas Chief Sostrom worked his way up through the ranks as a corporal and continued to the rank of sergeant. And whereas Chief Sostrom was promoted to the rank of lieutenant by Borough Council in 2007. And whereas Chief Sostrom was promoted to police chief by Borough Council in 2017 and served most honorably until his resignation effective this month, December 31st, 2021. And whereas Borough Council wishes to express their great appreciation to Chief Sostrom for his 32 years of public service and dedication to the residents of Phoenixville and the surrounding area. Now therefore be it resolved, and it is hereby resolved by the Borough Council of the Borough of Phoenixville, that Chief Tom Sostrom is recognized and publicly acknowledged for his dedication and leadership, not only in our community, but also on a regional basis in regards to emergency management." Again, I thank Chief Sostrom for all of his dedication over the last 32 years. I know he's out of the area tonight. We do look forward to a proper send-off at the reorganization meeting, January 3rd. But thank you to Chief Sostrom as well. Now for our less glamorous resolutions. What is council's pleasure?
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to consider the resolution approving the PennDOT Traffic Signal Maintenance Agreement.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Weiss, this is actually an agreement we've done several times. It is the same agreement, it's just been updated with some minor dates and other minor edits that we still require a resolution to adopt. Any questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries eight zero.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to consider the resolution authorizing signing of all documents required in the PennDOT Cooperative Memorandum of Agreement.
Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Soto, questions on this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries eight zero. And our final item for tonight's resolutions.
I'll make a motion to revise the master schedule of these for 2020, 2022.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Dugan, second by Mr. Kirchner, questions on the master schedule of fees? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries eight zero. With that, we'll need a motion to enter a public hearing?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Soto, second by Ms. Berkeley, I will hand this off to Chuck.
Thank you, Mr. President. We will convene a public hearing for the purpose of taking public comment with respect to changes to the borough zoning ordinance. Anytime a municipality wishes to change its zoning ordinance, it's required by the provisions of the municipality's planning code and the borough ordinance itself to have a public hearing pursuant to public notice. Procedurally, this evening, the notice of the hearing and the intent to adopt the ordinance was advertised in the Mercury both on November 29th and December 6th of this year. In addition, since a complete copy of the ordinance was not advertised, it was provided to the Chester County Law Library through correspondence dated November 19th. In addition, due to the fact that it's an amendment to the zoning ordinance, there are requirements that the ordinance be provided to several planning commissions, those being the local borough planning commission, the county planning commission, and the regional planning committee. I would note for the record this evening that council has received a memorandum of support dated November 5th from the Borough Planning Commission. We received a review letter and comment from Chester County Planning Commission dated December 9th. And we received a letter dated December 8th from the Regional Planning Committee indicating that the change is consistent with the regional comprehensive plan. As noted, this ordinance is very straightforward. There's one substantive section. It is making a modification to Section 27301 Regulations and Standards Applicable to All Districts. Subsection B is being changed with regard to residential infill zoning district exceptions. It's modifying the size of the parcel and adding some language that the parcel must exist at the effective date of the ordinance. And it provides, for example, of what the exception applies for. Is there anyone that wishes to provide comment to Borough Council with respect to the zoning ordinance amendment? If so, please state your name and address. And if you're on virtually, Jen will acknowledge your turn your mic on to take your comment. Jen, is there anyone online that wishes to address council? Is there anyone present that wishes to address council and provide comment?
Yes. I'm Irene Hilly, and I read this. First of all, is this the only part of the ordinance that is being changed, this capital B?
Yes, that's correct.
That's the only part?
Yes.
Okay. I do not agree with these changes. This zoning ordinance was worked on several years ago, and I thought the language was very good at the time. I cannot see why you're changing tract area to parcel existing. Why do you have that? What does that mean? Can anyone on council tell me that?
This is this is for comment, Ms. Hilly, on on your comments about the ordinance, so council's listening, go ahead.
And then it continues, parcel existing at the effective date of this ordinance is at least, you're changing it from one acre to eight acres. That doesn't make sense at all. Why eight? Why the number eight? It's kind of a dubious number in itself. But I don't agree with that. If someone has something to develop, whatever the size, it doesn't, why does it have to come up to this eight acre? Or is this being presented to someone specific? Also, what do you mean by when you have this, you're going to adopt these changes? Does this mean that this is going to change throughout all the different sections of the ordinance? Where it's residential infill? Or does it just go to a certain residential infill? I think you are affecting a quality of life here. And I think you are posing this to a certain person or people. And I don't think it's right. I urge you not to adopt these changes. I don't know what comes into your head to think, well, let's change this. Why? Why are you changing this? I want answers. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else that wishes to address council with comments concerning the zoning ordinance amendment?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of Borough Council, Borough Manager. Three quick comments, I guess they can't be, I guess they'll be answered later. Is this, the three things I see in this change is that I'd like to know what the difference is between a tract and a parcel. I see that that terminology being changed. So what, why is that being changed? Number two, why was the parcel size increased from one acre to eight acres? What's the rationale behind that? And number three, what is Chester County's comment? I did not see that. I guess it was posted, but I didn't pick it up. So I'd like to know that and, you know, why we're changing this? What's the need to do that? If it's not need to be done, then it doesn't need to be done, or if there's some good reason to do it. All right, thank you.
Thank you for your comment, Dr. Sannick. Is there anyone else that wishes to address council as part of public comment of this public hearing?
Mr. Garner, I have no hands raised at this time.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, Mr. President, no more public comment. The public hearing may be closed, and I would again remind council that the ordinance has been advertised, so if council wishes to act this evening, it may adopt the ordinance.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Weiss to close the public hearing, questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries eight zero, the public hearing for item A is now closed. We are prepared to act on this tonight. Mr. Garner?
You certainly may.
What is council's pleasure regarding item A?
I'll make a motion to adopt the ordinance amendment to Chapter 27, Zoning, Part 3, Zoning Districts, Section 27-301 Regulations and Standards Applicable to All Zoning Districts.
We have a motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Soto. Just to answer the one question that the Chester County Planning Commission did give a favorable review and just said this is consistent with landscapes three.
Did the Reno General Planning Commission correct?
Yeah, yeah, it's just that Mr. Sannick could ask specifically about the county. So the county, and that will be, I think that's usually posted, but it was a brief letter of review. Any other questions or comments on this item? Mr. Soto?
Is there, is there at least a favorable explanation that we could talk to as far as like a language that's used to, you know, discuss the definition between, why did we choose those particular language? What the, why the purpose of the change was for?
Yeah, I think parcel is a more specific term rather than tract. Tract is just to track the land, parcel, identify specific parcels of land. So I think it was to better clarify what the ordinance was intending.
And we've had several of these over the last couple of years where we try to just clean up language to make it more appropriate for for a borough than than sort of general language that some of the zoning, you know, industry uses. Any other questions on council? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That, so that stands eight zero. Ms. Dugan?
I will make a motion to approve the ordinance adopting the 2022 real estate tax mileage.
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Dugan, second by Mr. Dalton.
I think we're opening a public hearing on that.
Yes, we're opening a public hearing. Yep, sorry. So motion to open a public hearing, sorry. Thank you. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion to open a public hearing for adopting the 2022 real estate tax mileage is now open. Mr. Garner?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a public hearing to take public comment with respect to the annual ordinance required to be enacted by the borough to establish the real estate tax mileage for the next calendar year, which is 2021. Procedurally, the notice of this hearing, as well as the ordinance itself, was advertised in the Mercury on December the 6th. A complete copy of the ordinance was provided to the Chester County Law Library on November 19th. As council has in the packet, the ordinance provides for, at least the ordinance in front of you, provides for a total mileage of 7.33 mils. It's divided into three categories, mils for general purposes, mils for fire protection, and mils for public park and recreation. I would note that the ad in the newspaper indicated the mileage rate was higher. It's permitted to be lowered, and it's in front of you today that it's lowered from its advertised 7.82 mils down to 7.33 mils. If anyone wishes to provide comment to Borough Council with respect to this ordinance, now would be the time to do that. State your name and address, and we certainly take your comment on the ordinance.
Mr. Garner, just for clarification, since lots of folks at home may not pay attention, mileage versus percentage. What is the percentage change from the advertised to the proposed adopted? What is the percentage change from the advertised to the proposed adopted?
I think Mr. Crack has that actual percentage.
Sure, the as advertised at the higher mileage, that represented an eight point five three percent increase. Across all three categories. That what you are potentially approving tonight drops that down to one point eight three percent increase.
Thank you, Mr. Crack.
I just would note you've already adopted your budget, so this is a required action to fund that budget in some fashion.
Mr. Garner, I have no hands raised.
Okay, if there's no public comment, Mr. President, we can close the public hearing and would not only mandate council's action on this. Not not discretionary.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Weiss, second by Ms. Berkeley to close the public hearing. All those in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? Motion carries eight zero. The public hearing is now closed. This is something we do have to act on. What is council's pleasure?
Then I will make the motion to approve our one point eight. What was it?
One point eight three.
Percent tax increase with a mileage of. What was that number?
Seven point three three.
Seven point three three.
Second, we have a motion by Ms. Dugan, second by Mr. Weiss. Questions on the motion?
I'd just like just to, because it came down a bit, we've heard some discussion publicly, but if you could, Gene, just kind of. Tell us why we were, why there was a dramatic improvement in the. You know, how little we had to raise the 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 taxes and what happened?
Sure, and it's it's by statute, Borough Code, we have to present a draft budget. And we do that in November. We have to do that in advance of you potentially approving it. The dilemma that we have always run into, unfortunately, I'll say that the, at least the state legislature seems to have recognized that. Has actually put forth a change to the statute. Hopefully that'll go through, but as of right now, we still have to follow it. So what happens is when we do the draft budget, we're still waiting on four significant pieces of information. One of those is the assessed valuation that comes from the county. Our general liability. Insurance, which comes from Penn Prime and our workers' comp and our health insurance information, which comes from the Delaware Valley. Health Trust. That information just recently came through. As 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 we were drafting the budget, we estimated that the. The assessed valuation was going to be at about a hundred eight hundred and twelve million. It came in at eight hundred and twenty six million. So that was that was an additional hundred thousand dollars just on that alone. So that starts to drop that number very quickly and then working with our our health trust and as well as our general liability insurance trust. Those numbers came in very well as as well. We thought we were going to have about, as an example, sixty thousand dollars in cost for cybersecurity. That number dropped down below twenty thousand, and so all of those things cumulatively made that dynamic change from eight point five three percent. Last month to one point eight three percent today.
And I think we in the previous discussion, just to share this with the the general public, the notion that our growth will help. The the growth that we're experiencing, this seems to be paying out. The the increased in the assessed value of the property is probably because of the new. Many of the new structures that are that are being built right now. That was my impression.
There is that, and and those of you that were around when we instituted the the LERTA, the. The two projects, Phoenix Village, as well as River Works. They're now hitting the the years where we're starting to get to the the fourth and fifth year where we're starting to get forty and fifty percent of that. That that tax dollars. And so in the next five years, those two will start to add to it as well as Steel Point behind us, Luxor. Eagle Point Village, all of those come into play to your point, yes.
Any other questions or comments from council on the motion to adopt our real estate mileage? I just want to thank staff because I know. Well, the the, you know, increased property values from the increased development is one part of it. The other part of it is our staff works incredibly hard at being a very diligent store to the public dollar. And I do appreciate all the work that they put into to keeping our tax rate as low as possible, considering all the services. That we provide for the residents in the in the region as a whole, so. Any with that, all those in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? Motion carries eight zero. We'll move on to Mr. Moore with reports of committees and boards and commissions with the planning commission.
So procedural matter here, the first topic up is the Odessa. Project, which as of the last council meeting was tabled. So do, I'm not sure who did it. Was it you, Rich? Did you? Okay, so how does it? What do we do?
Oh, Mr. President?
Yes.
I'll make a motion that we remove. The item from the table regarding the Odessa development.
We have to vote on that. We do untabling once a decade.
Yeah, you should vote on that, but I thought the motion last month was to table it until tonight. I don't think you need a motion to untable.
I think maybe you table it to a date certain.
Okay, so tabling to a date certain, we're just bringing it up on the agenda at this point?
Correct.
Okay, so. With that, we can just go to Mr. Moore and the applicant, right?
So yes, if we can ask the applicant to come forward, so as I understand it. Just crack, I believe there's been some further developments in the development, further discussion. So I guess you could continue to present it. Right now, the the resolution. To give final approval to the development plan, known as the Descent Development, is still under discussion. Okay.
Hi, good evening. Kester Kelly from BL Companies. I'm the civil engineer on behalf of the applicant. We're here tonight to seek approval for the Odessa final land development plan. There was a couple of public comments that I just wanted to very briefly touch on. One was stormwater management. There is one above ground basin, but there are four store below ground underground stormwater management basins. So we clearly are meeting all of the requirements for stormwater from the borough standards and the state standards. I just wanted to clarify that. The other item that came up was the connection into Fillmore. There is a right of way. Associated with Ashburn Road currently. That right of way has been offered for dedication to the borough. I don't know for sure or not if they've accepted it, but that is that is how we were able to make that connection. And then any of the parcels that we are showing, both on the Odessa side of the railroad ravine. In the Fillmore Village side of the railroad ravine are currently owned with the applicant. That's part of the lot that's being consolidated in part of this project. We're here still seeking the same number of waivers. I reviewed them last time. I'm happy to review them again, but I don't want to if not needed. The only item that really had been further discussed was the build to line is, I'm not sure if that's what you're referring to. Along Fillmore Street, but we did provide an exhibit which shows Fillmore Street from Township Line Road to Crombie Road. And the different setbacks to the structures. We measured the setbacks from the central line of Fillmore to the the first habitable wall of the structure. So it doesn't include things like sheds or garages. And so, you know, we are. You're meeting the build to line and I can go into a little bit more detail, so. Printed it out too small, but residential properties within the mixed use growth district. Use the dimensional standards of the IR district. We are allowed to modify those up to twenty five percent to meet the existing street state. So two of the closest. Structures to Fillmore Street currently is the townhouses along Fillmore Street associated with. Fillmore Village that back up to Utley Alley. They are currently fifty one feet and there's a single family home. Along Fillmore Street near the intersection of Crombie Road of thirty four. But if you use the Fillmore Street townhouses, which are probably the most applicable. We fall within that twenty five percent allowable range for the distance of the townhouses along Fillmore Street with Odessa. Which is thirty nine feet from the central of the road to the same front habitable wall.
Could I ask about, there was one person, the lawyer represents the property holder where the racetrack is. Was asking about a physical barrier along the trail. I felt like when he described that, that there was some kind of plan to put one there, or is there not? Can you can you just speak to that?
Sure, so currently there is not any barrier between the south property line of Odessa. And that racetrack property. We do have some fencing around the ravine. You know, my initial feedback with the with the suggestion. Of a six foot vinyl fencing, I think is is not the right approach. From an aesthetics and from, you know, we are extending the trail from Scoop River to Township Line Road. So, you know, we want to keep that open. So at this point, that is not part of the application.
Is it possible to do some some general shielding though with with vegetation? I believe, you know, is there a landscaping plan for the south side of the trail? I know we have to keep a certain amount of right of way clear because of fire, we are using that as fire access.
That's correct.
So I know there's there's some limitations on that, but I wasn't sure if there. And I know this is one of the items that I I had spoken with with the applicant. That it is very clear that the the midget track exists and their right to exist is there. And, you know, we we would just prefer or we request that that is transmitted to the new residents amply. You know, it will come up, I'm sure.
Sure, yeah, no, I think. We acknowledge that. Currently, there's not a landscaping buffer. The the extension of the trail is fairly close to the property line. It doesn't offer a lot of buffering opportunities. We, you know, we do have. A very robust landscape plan otherwise, so I think in general, there's a lot of landscaping, but not specifically between the trail and that property.
One of the other items that was asked last week, and I believe you can answer tonight, is access during construction. I believe that was discussed. For for which way?
Sure, I don't have a specific knowledge of that discussion that you're referencing, but. We are proposing access off of Township Line Road and Fillmore Street. There will be be no construction access along Ashburn.
That was the that was the what I was referencing.
That's what the plans reflect currently as well.
Questions from council?
Yes, Mr. President. If I may, I'm. I'm struggling a little bit with the access from Ashburn because. The the plan, the line on the plan only goes up to the property line. But then the drawings show a. A continuation of Ashburn. But that's not the property. That's not on this property. That's not.
I can you explain that again so I make sure I'm answering your question correctly?
Yes.
And you said the line, I'm not sure what.
Well, there is, there's the boundary, the eastern boundary of the property.
Of Odessa property?
Of the Odessa property.
Okay.
Okay. And that ends well before. The, you know, if it's a continuation, if you're. Visualizing a continuation of Ashburn.
I think we're trying to pull up the plan right now so you can try to diagram it.
Yeah.
A little better. Bear with.
There it is. I mean, it shows a continuation of Ashburn, but that's not on this property. That's not on the Odessa property. That's off the property.
So when you say the Odessa property, part of this land development application is a lot consolidation and then subdivision. So the applicant is actually. Consolidating the Odessa property, which is the large property. It with nine eighteen Township Line Road, along with a parcel that we that used to be owned by Ditterline.
So that's the gray area.
On this exhibit is more up near the Butterfly Garden and the plantings kind of in that north corner. And then there was the old railroad ravine.
Right.
And I am not a land use attorney, so I'm going to try to get this, but it's my understanding when that gets condemned or abandoned. Yes, this property splits down the middle and it defaults to the property owner. One half goes to this property owner, the other half goes to this property owner. So then from the center line of the ravine towards Odessa is then owned by the applicant. And then there is a portion, a small portion on. What everyone thinks is Fillmore Village that was not deeded over to the HOA. So that's that odd shaped kind of sliver piece on that. So the applicant owns that to the center line of the ravine. That's all reflected on the subdivision plan. That's been, you know, confirmed by the land surveyor. And that's part of the consolidation.
The the information I received from the HOA and. And and this is why I'm having a concern because talking to the HOA and talking to you. I'm getting two different stories about who owns what here with regard to Ashburn Road. The eight, wait, let me finish. The HOA says they control Ashburn Road. And I and the applicant says he controls Ashburn Road, so.
So what I just described wasn't Ashburn Road. That was the areas in and around it. The actual Ashburn Road itself has a sixty foot right of way on it, on the plan.
Right.
That is land that has been offered for dedication to the borough. I believe at any point in time, if they haven't already, they can offer, they can accept dedication.
Right.
To that. The applicant did that when he developed Fillmore.
Okay, but but the, and I know that's that's your position.
Okay.
That is disputed somewhat by the HOA. So by the HOA representatives. And the the other thing, that item is that that sliver of property between where Ashburn Road currently ends. And the, I'll say the eastern. Boundary that would be on the right of this property. That's, and and I've tried to figure this out and. It's as clear as mud to me.
Sure.
About who owns what here. And I think, you know, if if this does go forward, I I think we need to. Add a provision in this list, this itemized list that's part of the resolution. That the applicant must. Show some kind of proof that it controls. This property. Because. I I can't say, you know, in what I heard last month. What I what I got from the the HOA manager. I I can't tell you who owns what. Here, and I'm supposed to vote on this. This is a legal document, so.
Understood, yeah, I mean.
So I I really think.
I would defer to, you know, some of the professionals and in this case, you know, the licensed land surveyor who prepared the lot. The existing conditions plan, the lot consolidation plan, and then the subdivision plan.
Right.
You know, I mean, he's a professional. He's going to put his license on the plan.
Well, and I and I think if that's the case, then.
That's.
If it is made a condition that there must be some kind of proof. Provided that the applicant controls this. That.
I don't object to that.
That's that's not the, that's not a big hurdle for the applicant, but that gives. That gives me some kind of peace of mind that. You know, we're. We're not voting on some some kind of gray mysterious.
I don't believe that you are, and I think.
You don't believe we are. I don't know.
I don't believe that we are, no, exactly. I don't believe that we are. No, exactly.
Well, and I, I know you, I mean, you're more intimately involved with the nitty gritty of this. I'm not.
Sure.
So, uh, but I need something. That provides some kind of peace of mind that if this does go through. And there is a road built there that the. That the individual, the entity building that road actually has the right to build that road. And we, I think we need to set some kind of. Raise some kind of bar as to proof of that control.
Uh, Rich, I'll just offer as liaison. I don't recall this topic really being discussed. Certainly in the four, I guess there were four hearings or maybe more. About that connection. Now, I, it sounds like it's. But it may have been, it may have been memozed. It may have been something that, uh, there was correspondence with the borough about. So, uh, I, I appreciate, you're right. I mean. They're going to build the road to, right now, looking at an overhead shot. Right now, the McAdam ends at a certain point. And then there's the infill and there's dirt there. And there's, and that's, that infill is. East of where the, where the railroad cut was.
Yes.
I, I mean, it's not, and so. I, I don't know. Gene, can you provide any clarification on this?
It's just before Gene says something is, you know, under the previous, um. Plan for Odessa, you know, there was, there has been some work that has been done, as I previously mentioned.
Right.
One of that was installing a culvert into that ravine and doing a, a large amount of fill operation. You know, so that has already been done and, you know. I, I'm certain the applicant would not have invested that amount of time and money to do that. If he did not own that property to make that connection. So there has been, you know. Plans put into place to make that road connection that exists.
When, and for the sake of the, for Mr. Kurtner and the HOA, this is certainly something you could add as a, as an item to tonight's approval. You know, the applicant would have to accept that as a condition of approval, but. We, that can be added on to, to show ownership, and I think that's a pretty easy bar to, uh, to require.
Yes, I, 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 I would agree and, um. But if, if I, if I just may regarding Mr. Moore, this didn't come up. At the planning commission, I didn't know about this until, I think, Saturday, when I sent. A sort of a group email out to Fillmore Village people, letting them know that this would be brought with, this would be on council's agenda tonight. And one, um. Well, um, Ms. Matterford, who, uh, participated in public participation this evening. Uh, she mentioned to me about. Ashburn Road and then another resident there also mentioned to me about it. I contacted the. HOA manager today. So, and then I went out, I didn't check my email till like four thirty or so, so. You know, and, uh, that's why, I, I, that's why this is all kind of coalescing at the last minute because. I let things go to the last minute.
Well, and I, and as I said, I, I don't recall, but there was. An enormous, an enormous amount of technical discussion, so. I, they may well have in- investigated this. How, how do we, do we make a modification? Do we have to make an, uh, an amendment? Right now I've offered a resolution. So, so just.
Just to address the concerns that are being raised, and I think it's always implied, and remember, the borough looks at. Compliance with borough ordinances and regulations. Borough is not a judge of who owns what property, and I don't know what. Information you receive from the HOA, and we're not going to decide that tonight. But it's always implied that the property owner, developer, has rights to certain property, and if there's a contest of. Access or ability to use, that's something that's kind of a private dispute. But to your point, Mr. Kurtner, I think adding a one condition to the motion that, that the developer. Has to show proof of ownership in order to make that connection. Is reasonable to put on, but it's always implied even if you didn't do it. But since now it's, appears to be an issue. Let's, let's put it in the resolution as a condition.
Well, be, be, before we get there, and, and I think what, what, what we may end up with here are. A couple of other things.
And, and I'm, I'm not saying there's not more. I'm just saying that is certainly reasonable to include.
But there, there's, there's another way around this, and this has been brought up to me too. Just. Don't have the Ashburn Road connector.
So I, I know that was brought up last month. Uh, it's my understanding that we, the development of this size does require three points of access. Is that? In terms of ingress and access, is that accurate?
I mean. We think that it's a, a good design for this site, for this use. That's always how the project has been con- contemplated. Uh, you know, it also provides, you know, the fire access connection that you can make. Along the Scoop River Trail extension that we're extending. So, you know, as for currently it's part of the project, and we believe it's a vital part of the project.
Uh, the, yeah, the far, it's, the, the fire access has been assessed on the basis of three access points. We, they, we, if we would, if we were to like direct them to, or, or refuse to approve it with, unless they eliminated that, we'd be back. We'd be back to the square one. You know, we, we want to proceed with that direction, but, I mean. Five years now, there's always been three entry points to this. This development, right?
That is correct.
Okay, but to be fair, the entry point in question led directly to Township Line Road. This is an entry. This is no longer being looked at as like a throughway.
No.
And, um, maybe I'll flip this on its head and think about a council five to ten years from now. With residents from said neighborhood calling, like the residents from Ross Lane. They're saying, hey, we have people using our street as a cut through to. The other side of the road, which is the whole point of why residents at Ashburn have made this complaint because they, they foresee it as a cut through. Through that road, whether it's a valid. You know, i- if, if we're talking about whether or not it, there's a safety concern, added access to fire. Et cetera, sure, but let's vote on that for that measure and not for, it's nice to have three. You know, I think, I think it's clear that there's. Other options of, of, available and, um. Yeah, I don't know. That's, that's all I have to say there.
So based on the, the previous where that went from Ashburn, the extension of Ashburn, like you said, pretty much straight across the Township Line Road. You know, I think that had the potential to, to be much more of a cut through. You know, this, a- as you'll see, there's a lot to get through. If you're going to go from Ashburn Road through this development to Township Line Road, you know, it's not a straight shot. You have curves. At every intersection that we have with Road B and Road C, there's a stop sign. We've also at the planning commission's recommendation added some, um. Race speed humps along the way as well, and there's a race speed hump al- along the crossing of Scoop River Trail. So. We've made it very, very challenging to make this a cut through. So we've already put into place some of the steps that sounds like that were taken on that other development.
And traffic flow up of Fillmore. Onto Ashburn as it's currently configured. You actually, driving west. Can't just drive onto that. Am I, am I right about that? Is that a do not enter there? You have to go up to. To Bunning? No, I'm actually, I'm looking at not, not.
Yeah, it's also.
I'm not looking at the map. I'm looking at the, the current infrastructure.
Yeah, dude, yeah.
You, you cannot drive.
You're not, you're not able to go straight.
Fillmore and go straight onto Ashburn. You have to go up to Bunning and take a.
Correct.
And, and take a left and then get on Ashburn.
And, and there's not a plan to change that.
And there's not a plan to change that. Now, granted, I mean, we, we could probably maybe, I don't know, do better signage. If your, your concern is. It's going to be a cut through. If Fillmore went straight onto that, I could agree with it.
That, that isn't my concern. That is the concern of the residents that have.
Well, you were expressing this, right?
So.
Okay, so. I, I appreciate their concern, um, but I think the street design into, into that portion. Of Fillmore Village, and granted, I'm from the westward. I'm not, I don't live up there with you guys. Seems like there's elements in place to address that concern. And I, I, you know. Ra- Ross has a problem and, and it's got curves and it's got a stop sign. It's got intersections. And we still have a perception and we've put, put the speed down to fifty miles an hour. This. At your Ashburn will, will be twenty-five, right? Um, but with speed bumps.
Owen, if I may, Mr. President, that, that was part of. The rationale for asking for the speed humps on Ashburn Street two, to make it less desirable. Even less desirable to be a cut through. Which is, I, I see that they are included in the, the modified resolution before us tonight. So. You know, but I, you know, I, I, I do appreciate the, the fact that this is. Also a, a third emergency access. It is a rather large apartment building there. I, I can see why an emergency access there is important. So, but I, a- again, the intention of the. It, you know, there, there is the sign there, no left turn at, uh, at Ashburn. We're going west on Fillmore. No, no left turn onto Ashburn from Fillmore. So that's, uh. You know, for people who comply with traffic signal, signs and signals. You know, that, that is a deterrent, so. There, there was. I, I, I also wanted to ask, oh, I wanted to ask about the setback of the homes on. This is Fillmore Street. You said that's thirty-nine feet?
Yeah.
And, a- and that's in this plan as. Has, has that been modified from the plan?
No, um, it has not been modified from the plan.
Okay.
Um, I don't. Think there was an, a dimension shown, but that's what it's, that is where it was. That's what it was scaled. Um, and we just provided this additional build-to-line exhibit. Um, that should have been included in the package, just to clarify that.
Okay.
Oh, thanks. Sorry. Yeah, so again, the, none of the. Buildings have been moved, but this was just kind of like a, a snapshot of from Township Line Road to Crombie. Um, all of the existing structures, you know, we dimensions, the ones, you know, it shows that. There are some very close, you know, as close as thirty-four, and there are some that are eighty-six. Um, and then, you know, were within the closest or the farthest and within the allowable twenty-five percent EB.
I, I guess my, my issue here, and I know this is. Th- this is permitted, you know, on a parcel of this size, but. If you're looking at. The area from Bunning Avenue to, uh, Township Line Road as a block. It is introducing a new housing type onto this block. There are two detached, single-family homes, the. The vacant lot that would be. Odessa, this, this is going west on Fillmore Street, two detached, single-family homes, vacant lot that would be Odessa. The, um, St. Peter and Paul Cemetery, then two more detached, single-family homes. So. In that stretch of detached, single-family homes. You're introducing townhouses. Now, I, I know that's permitted. But it's, um. I, I, I guess it's not ideal, and I think back to when Northridge was approved, and that was under the previous zoning ordinance. The nineteen ninety-one zoning ordinance, those single-family detached, single-family homes were put on. Mallory Road to keep in compliance with the type of housing. That was on Mallory Road to not introduce a, um, a new type of housing on Mallory Road. Now. That's not the case here. It's not ideal. I can ask. Can you make those, put a couple of, uh, single-family detached homes there? Instead of the, uh, the townhouses?
I mean, that's not the current plan. I don't think that's what, um, you know, we're in front of you for approval, and that's not what. The applicant, um, has in mind and, you know, the, the documentation we submitted in terms of. Fiscal impacts and market analysis, you know, this is currently what, uh, this type of stacked townhome product is currently in demand.
Okay. Well, I ask.
Understood.
Thank you.
I'm going to jump in here for just a moment after speaking with our solicitor, um, since this is a tabled motion and the resolution has actually changed since. Last month to this month with some minor changes, uh, we do need a new motion to move forward, so. If.
Do I have to withdraw the old one or not?
We'll just start with a new, just a fresh, fresh motion.
Fresh motion, Mr. Moore. Hang on there. Uh, so I'd like to make a motion to consider a resolution granting final approval of the subdivision and land development plan known as the Odessa Development. As recommended five-one in the Planning Commission Action Memo on the November fifth, twenty twenty-one.
My motion by Mr. Moore, second by Mr. Dalton. Okay, so now we can continue conversation. Uh, thank you for. Uh, updating the motion on this item. Again, we table things about once a decade, so I'm not completely up to stuff on the rules. Other questions from council?
Yes, I, I have.
Yes.
Are, are we okay with the trail?
No, I was going to get to that, but.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
I, I mean, I'll jump on that now, and this is a conversation that I know I, I did have with the applicant. The, the trail crossing concerns that have been raised, I think, are, are quite valid. Um, I think with the amount of land development, uh, earth movement and, and otherwise. It, it would be reasonable to require either a bridge or a tunnel being, um. Uh, what is it? A box culvert type, uh, structure to allow for safe passage. Um, it would eliminate the need for signalization and these other items. Um, I understand the bridge probably doesn't work because of the way that the, the slope and, and everything else, but. Um, I do think that, uh, with the way this, and I'm not, I'm not an engineer on this, uh, but I do think that. A box culvert, uh, as we've used on multiple development projects for the Chester Valley Trail. And as, uh, Feenstra High School actually uses on their property for student passage to the athletic fields. That we could, uh, require that as a, as a. Condition of approval for, for this plan since. Uh, as a daily trail user, uh, all year long, I, uh, every time we put a segment on here that forces interaction with vehicles, it. Does, uh, increase risk and, and create risk that's unnecessary, I think. So. That'd be a condition of approval that I'd like to add to it.
Like to agree with that.
Other questions and comments about the plan in front of us?
Do those conditions need a, an amendment, or how's that done?
Yes, I think that would require whatever you're adding to the resolution. I know there have been different things talked.
So we'll, we'll have to, you know, we'll, we'll put them all together at the end.
Okay.
Um, we'll have to have the applicant, who I know the applicant's in the, in the virtual audience, um. Signal that they'll, they'll, are interested in abiding, um, since, uh, the engineer isn't able to speak on behalf of the applicant for these things. So we'll, we'll bundle that at the end, I would say.
Okay.
In terms of an updated motion, so. What else? Uh, other comments, questions on the plan in front of us?
Yes, yeah, Mr. President, there are a couple of items, um, items I and J. Where the applicant, um, is making a, a contribution. I is fifty thousand dollars to. The, uh, council on affordable housing. And, uh, J is, uh, annual four thousand dollar contribution to the downtown economic revitalization program. And I was thinking we are. Uh, we, we do have, um, before us, another item of business, an offer of a, uh. A nature preserve. And, um, a- along the lines of these two items. If the applicant would consider paying for the environmental. Um, assessment for that nature. um, assessment for that nature preserve. Uh, that is probably an item R, since O would be proof of control of Ashburn Road and P would be uh, culvert for the trail?
Yeah, this is currently on my list is the ownership, the the trail, and um, and you're proposing the um the uh, assessment of the donated parcel.
The, yes, the environmental assessment.
Yep.
Contribution for the environmental assessment of that donated parcel, yes.
But that's not, that's not part of this application, correct? But you, you won't make that a condition of this application?
That would Yes, that that would be added as a condition of approval.
What, is it a requirement that they do it, or is it a requirement that we ask them to do it?
Well, it could be worded as the others I I and J are to voluntarily contribute.
Okay.
Just for 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 clarity, uh, I know that that number is fifty-three hundred dollars.
Pardon me?
I I said for clarity, uh, the, I already know what the cost of that is, it's fifty-three hundred dollars.
Okay.
So that that would be if the developer, if if you're asking to put that in and they they agree to that, that that additional cost would be fifty-three hundred dollars.
Other questions from council, otherwise I I think we may have the applicant um, available to answer some of these questions, so um, if there's no current questions from council, um, let's uh, bring on the applicant uh, to further that dialogue.
Mr. Moskowitz, if you can hear me, I've promoted you to panelist, if you'll accept.
Am I now on?
There you are, sir, we hear you.
And and what specifically do you want me to respond to?
So currently, we um, we have three items that are being uh, considered as conditions of approval for the application for Odessa. Uh, I believe you were listening during the course of the conversation. Um, so one of the conditions for approval is to satisfy the um, ownership of the the right-of-way with the Ashburn Road um, connection into the Odessa property. The other condition of approval would be to uh, engineer and and install either a bridge or tunnel for the trail crossing. And then the third condition of approval that was just proposed was to uh, provide for the um environmental assessment of the nature preserve uh, right down the way that's being offered for uh, gift to the borough. So, those are currently the three items that were uh, asked as uh, items for you to to respond to. And in addition to um, the standing resolution um, as drafted. And then any other questions that council might come up with in the meantime?
Uh, uh, all right, I'll, I'll take them uh, with the last one first. Uh, we did, uh, in fact, um, our partnership make an offer to dedicate land to the borough for the MDM Nature Preserve. I thought that was our offer, I if the borough is saying, well, that's not a glamorous enough offer, we want you to increase that offer. Yeah, I'm not gonna argue about that, but um, and and the author still stands. So that one's agreed to. Uh, the, the culvert, I said we'd look into it, we we haven't uh, quite gotten uh, an engineering response. Um, I assume it's, it's uh, feasible from an engineering point of view. Uh, but I'm not an engineer. Um, so I, I guess we agree to that one. Uh, the third one, as to the ownership, I am a land use uh, attorney, and uh, we, we own what we're doing. And my understanding is that the question of ownership of of land is not a subject that a municipality can determine. Uh, it's only for a court in what's called an action, the quiet title. So unless some come, one comes in with a deed or something that establishes that we we don't own it, uh, I think the borough should accept our representation that uh, we do own it, and I think that's what the law requires.
I'll defer to Chuck on this, since none of us are land use attorneys, so uh.
No, I, I don't know if you were listening, Mr. Moskowitz, I, I think I had suggested to council that we just place a condition in that you're able to assert and prove ownership of of what you said you have, and beyond that, I agree with you, we can only regulate what's in our ordinances. But uh, it certainly implied that you own that and have the right to connect. So, again, I don't know why you would object to the condition that we're, we're asking you that you essentially can prove your ownership or at least not have any objection, so I don't think we're, I think we're talking over each other, but I think we're saying the same thing.
Okay, I'll accept your representation that we are.
Other questions or comments from council?
Can I offer something up about the the crossing to Ashburn?
Please.
Um, you know, I, I am an engineer, but I haven't looked at this, this uh, subject. But if there could be some language about some kind of like, you know, looking at the feasibility and deter, if it's not determined to be feasible, you know, from, from a true engineering standpoint, I would like to it'd be nice to have some language that says we will investigate the options to the satisfaction of I don't know, borough staff or the, you know, borough engineer to determine the feasibility of 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 alternate methods of crossing Ashburn.
Yeah, uh, my question, would would it make sense to just state the problem we'd like to solve and leave that up to the applicant and how to solve that problem? The problem of crossing the
They, they, they have a solution, it's in the plan, that's their proposed solution.
I, I think what uh, everybody here is asking for, and I think what uh, Castro's saying as well is that we will write the language as a condition of approval that we are seeking these this methodology to avoid an at-grade crossing to the extent that it could be engineered.
Yep.
And then if it can't be, then the at-grade crossing is what is left standing.
I I would, I think I'd be comfortable with that, as long as we look to, you know, that the trail can be shifted to the left or right or however feasible, you know. Um, if we're talking about redirecting it over or under, we may be able to realign it modestly in order to eliminate future interaction between pedestrians and vehicles, which is just, that's my end goal, you know. It removes that risk altogether, um, and I'd love to not introduce it if we, if we can avoid it, but I understand that um, you know, what I picture isn't necessarily feasible. However, now is the time to ask for it, uh, when you're moving all the dirt, you have, you have all the elements to work with, if there's a time to do it, it's, it's now. Um.
Absolutely, I think we're definitely open to investigating the different options, and I just didn't wanna necessarily have the language so so constrictive, because like you said, perhaps, you know, there's the option of, you know, moving the trail or, you know, eliminating another at-grade crossing in in exchange for that or something, I just wanna keep it open enough that we can be as creative as possible to solve this.
I, I think that would be, I think we can all throw that into the resolution to that extent.
With, with, with my, that it be a technical engineering question, not a, you know, cost too much.
Yeah.
Okay, I mean, cause we could write the language and you say, well, yeah, but it'll cost too much. And that would give you the out, so that would be my only other concern, it would be, I think we all would love to see not have to do a grade crossing there.
Uh, so we, we currently have three conditions of approval that we've discussed tonight that the applicant has indicated um, agreement with. Um, what other comments, questions about this project? Um, I do appreciate the information background and the, the blow-up picture on the uh, build-two line, that's one that always tricks me up because of the uh, the mixed-use area and the twenty-five percent rule. Um, and then I immediately picture North Ridge and North Ridge was under our previous zoning, so um, that doesn't play into this. What else do we have?
I, I'll, I'll just make the following statement, I've received a lot of communications as, as the Borough Council Liaison, the Planning Commission. Received a lot of communications um, urging us to reject this on the basis of that we will be losing, you know, twelve acres of woodlands. And that uh, also the concern about the two dens and the significant change, the what some felt were a significant change from what was approved in twenty sixteen to now, from the apartment buildings to the, the townhomes with the apartment building. I am satisfied that uh, we have done all the due diligence we need to do within the confines of the uh, zoning to approve this project, and I'm willing to appreciate that there's a, we're losing twelve acres of trees here that grew up, you know, because the land sat fallow. But this is their property, we zoned it to do this, there's a development to the east, and developments to the south. And I think it's, I think it's a good use of the property. And and it adds people to this borough along the trail, which they will be able to live in and walk along. It is part of what we envisioned from the comprehensive plan onward. I realize it's more density and it's more development, and there's a lot of people, there, there's a, a community of people within the borough opposed to it. But I think it's a good plan and I, I support it. And I just wanted to go on the record on that.
I think too, this conversation came up with a couple correspondences, I had, um, Mr. Crack was able to give some good responses. It, to Mr. Moore's point, when we look at things like open air, open space and all of that, not specific to this project, but in general, we need to look at a county level and at a regional level, and what are we doing at those levels, not just within development within the borough and making sure we're looking at our ecosystem in that way. Um, so while we, we need to do what is right for this development and what's within our right for that, we also need to look at that on a bigger picture, because that's where we will be able to make impacts.
Mr. President, I, I ask a point of order, is, is an amendment in order? Uh, amendment to the motion in order to accommodate these three items that we discussed?
I think prior to a vote, well, I just wanted to, to wait on amending the motion until we had any amendments put together, and um, the only other one which I believe the applicant is, is okay with is the, the language that um, explaining the existence of the, the midget track, and that's the um, I think Dave has indicated that that's agreeable. Um, since that is going to uh, cause some complaints for us in the future, I'm sure. Oh, so that's, that's four items um, at the moment. Any other questions at this moment, or or should we amend the motion with these additions? Okay, with that.
Uh, I've made the amendment to the four conditions, uh, do you need me to state the man?
Just, just so everyone's clear, what, what they are.
Right, so the investigation of the culvert of, of a, of a non, but non-grade tra- uh, trail crossing, um, the uh, additional savings or additional contribution to help with the environmental study of the, of the preserve.
Ownership of the right-of-way?
Ownership of the right-of-way, thank you very much, validation and um, confirmation of the ownership of the right-of-way and uh
Midget track.
Uh, addressing the concerns about the, the track.
Oh, then my second accordingly.
Okay, so we have an updated motion, do we need to vote to accept the?
I think I was the second on that, can we confirm that?
Yeah.
I was the second on the first or the second, I know we read wanna make sure we're crossed.
Actually, it's Dalton that was the second, and he, he accepts the uh, amendments. So we have a, an updated motion uh, for the approval of this project. Um, any other uh, information from the applicant or any other questions from council? Okay, we'll call the vote, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries seven-one, thank you, Castro.
Thank you very much for your time.
Mr. Moore, your second item tonight.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, uh, I'd like to make a motion to um uh, accept the um uh, consider a resolution granting final approval of the subdivision and land development plan known as thirty-four South Main Street or as recommended six-oh and planning commission action memo of November eighth, twenty twenty-one.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Moore, second by Mr. Weiss. Uh, with that, we do have the applicant in the room, if they would like to uh, step up, um, introduce themselves, gives us some, um, I think it'd be prudent to give some background um, on the changes, uh, since this was an approved project, uh, what, last January? Or so, and um, and it's before us again, so if you wanna give us a background to bring us up to speed here, I think it'd be helpful for all of us and everybody at home.
Good evening, uh, members of Borough Council and management staff, my name is Brendan Burke, I'm the attorney for the applicant. Um, yes, you're probably very familiar with this project, because this is our second time through land development in less than about a year and a half, which is unusual for sure. Um, we have seen and were very diligently with the borough, taking into consideration borough staff concerns, doing our best, as you heard in some previous comments from, from the audience and from the community members, changes such as uh, reducing the number of units, moving the garbage and facilities inside is a quality of life issue, raising the um, the ADA compliant unit upstairs, and, you know, great cost and effort installing an elevator into the building, so there have been some changes, I think it's probably best that our project uh, designer, John Hassan, give you a very brief overview of that. Um, but I think as you will see from um, the review letters and the uh, action memo from your staff, there uh, there are very few issues we have with their comments and moving back and forth. Um, after Mr. Hassan gives a very brief overview of what's changed essentially since the previously approved a year ago project, um, I think I can double back again very quickly and perhaps um, give a succinct answer to some of the responses we've heard from the community, that I think would be helpful for everyone, and also to maybe address certain of the conditions. Um, and see if we can work on a resolution for that this evening, but I think, um, Mr. President, your, your request is a smart one. And I'll turn it to Mr. Hassan, just to explain the changes to the project since last you saw it. I know it's somewhat unusual to approve something for land development and have something very similar come back in a year, one of the reasons was the concerns that were raised by some of the community residents the first time and making sure our Ts were crossed and our Is were dotted, so with regard to the changes to the plan, um, the project designer is John Hassan, he's here.
Good evening, John Hassan, uh, from Three J H C Architects to uh, just to go over the changes from the previously approved plan, one of the biggest changes was the implementation of an elevator. Uh, that gave us the ability to relocate the handicap unit up to the upper level. We also reduced the number of units to twenty-two. We took the space that was known as two oh nine Church Street, which was the small retail commercial store that's on the side, and we converted that into a uh, handicap lobby, which uh, residents will be able to enter, and then the elevator will be located there, which will then go up to the upper floors, giving uh, the building more accessible uses as well as uh, two important things, which is to put the trash uh, room and the laundry room down at the, the basement level, um, which kind of separates it from, you know, the neighbors and, you know, contains a lot of those issues that were, were raised up by, you know, by the residents. That really is the biggest uh, changes to the plans, um, and uh, and thank you.
Um, cer- certainly, we expect there may be, you know, some questions from, from various council members or staff um, as, as we're moving forward, but um, one of the issues that has certainly been um, of concern to the applicant has been some of the concerns raised by community members with regard to they're calling not just the quality of life, but the quality of life of the residents in the structure with regard to density, and I think it's very important that Borough Council be aware that um the Veterans Administration has approved this housing, and frankly, it's designed and and conceptualized with their, their advice and consent, for example, very high roof in these lofts, modern appliances, hardwood floors, these are going to be quality residences that are there, and I don't think there's a real concern with regard to, oh, we're, uh, the applicant would not be, you know, treating the, the veterans well. With regard to the size of the units, again, these are likely and going to be uh, rented to single user occupancy, but there in fact is a ground floor common area that's designed and implemented for just what we're talking about, which is the VA will be involved with these the VA will be involved with these tenants and residents. That is a first floor ground floor meeting space that's intended for that specific use. But they can have meetings there. They can have counseling or put it to use, which it is required. Another thing, and I don't know if this is in the, in Borough Council's package, certainly has been provided to Mr. Crack, the manager. On November 12th, 2001, Dell Gravitt, who's the Executive Director of the Chester County Housing Authority, wrote a letter which dealt with the touchy issues of seems of parking and, and traffic. And Mr. Gravitt had said, and I want to read it directly, so I don't misstate it, that they have received the statistics on the percentage of cars at other public housing sites and project based voucher developments. All have approximately 20% or less of their residents owning vehicles, including the 55 unit Whitehall Veterans Housing in Spring City. So specifically, the words of Mr. Gravitt are, based on the above, your proposed development will likely have five or fewer vehicles. This should have very, very little impact on the neighborhood. And any of their resident vehicles can be given parking in the lot you have described. Specifically, what that refers to is 22 residents. We're talking about density and there's going to be quality of like 22 residences and five cars. I think we're all generally aware, and certainly you're probably more specifically aware, but the parking issues we have in the borough of Phoenixville. We're talking about five vehicles. And one of the issues, and it does tie into a condition that was proposed by Borough Council, was in the event that the individuals and tenants here require parking, rather than make them go find street parking, make them find off-site parking. Would the applicant consider arranging for them to have parking nearby? And to address that community concern, concern, Mr. Lyons went to great efforts. It's not easy finding parking in the borough. The idea that there might be a lot somewhere downtown very conveniently where we could just walk over and say, can you give us a five or a 10-year lease for 20 or so spots that we might or may not need? Isn't the case. It's just not practical. It's, it's, it's something that's not practicable, which makes it almost nearly impossible. But what we have been able to do is work in agreement with the First Presbyterian Church that if you have these people and they require parking, we'll park them. And I think that is above and beyond what's required. And the reason I say above and beyond is because Ray Ah has said in his review letter, the very first comment is, parking is not required here. This seems to be, it's an issue. It's a quality of life issue, but it's not required here. We're fronting on Main Street. The applicant purchased the property knowing that, and we're aware of that. The issue we have, and we're very, very thankful that the borough has so expeditiously twice now reviewed and worked with the applicant to try to make this happen. There's a need for this housing in Chester County. There's a need for this housing in the area. And this is an ideal location for it by all accounts, it claims to grab it in the Veterans Administration. However, the zoning doesn't require it. And by making a condition, a specific requirement to the applicant do that, it essentially is, is creating a zoning requirement that doesn't exist for a problem that might not exist. Again, we're talking at, at maximum five cars. And to have the applicant have to go out and do that, I think is, it's a pardon upon, it may be a bridge too far. Mr. Lyons has said time and again, and we'll reaffirm to you this evening, and we already have the First Presbyterian Church agreeing at present to be able to take care of that. If there's five, six, seven, two cars at the time of use occupancy, not a problem. It's taken care of. The agreement's in place. The applicant does have concerns, and I reinforce those concerns, that making it a condition of approval essentially is creating a de facto zoning here. It's creating a requirement that isn't ordinance based for a problem that is unlikely to present itself, for which is already continues your plan in place. But making it a, you know, a hard and fast condition is, is a very difficult thing. And, you know, as I said, I don't mean to make light of it. I don't mean to say that this isn't an issue because it is. But if someone were to say, Mr. Burke, Mr. Lyons, Mr. Hassan, what about the lot right across the street? They're leasing spots. Why, why can't your client go over there and put his money down the table and get 15 spots or 10 spots, or however many spots are needed? Those opportunities aren't available. And I want to give Mr. Lyons credit for turning over all the leaves he's done to try on a property that isn't a private development where you can simply increase the cost of a townhome or increase the cost or pass it along. This is a need-based operation. These units are below market value, to say the least, in terms of what could be done there in terms of residential housing. And to impose that other condition upon it is very difficult. Having said that, and I don't want to take any more of your time or state myself and beat a horse that may have been already addressed. It's, he is, and we are going to address that with the First Presbyterian lot if the need arises. So those are the, the, the things that I had taken note of and made note of. I'm trying to make some, uh, make some responses to the comments I heard earlier this evening from the, the members of the community who certainly have expressed, you know, their concern. With regard to the density, I don't think this is an opportunist opportunity. This is something that's entitled and allowed to be there. It's a wonderful reuse of that building. It's a use that is helpful, that doesn't create any additional impervious. It doesn't create any additional sort of outside the footprint issues for that structure. I think it's a wonderful use for what's there. The veterans will be hand in hand with the Veterans Administration, getting what they need. The applicant has reached out and been a conduit for that to happen as well. They know it's there. They know those resources are there. And I just think it's very important that the Borough Council know that we have tried. And the applicant has gone to great lengths since he last approved it to take things that were already in his approval the first time and was able to say, we don't need that. We can make this work without that. And they've done that in terms of reducing units, the elevator, the garbage cans. You're agreeing to go out and try to find that parking. So that is what I have for you. If you have any sort of application and plan based questions, of course, Mr. Hassan stands ready as well. But that is what I had. And that would be with regard to the only condition that raises concern and is something that the applicant is not comfortable with is that two F condition, the proposed resolution that would require the applicant to provide evidence of a parking lease acceptable to the borough for the residents of the apartment at the time of, of U and O issues. Thank you for your time. You have any questions? Happy to answer them.
Yeah, I have quite a few. This is my ward. And as you remember, I asked quite a few last time, so I will do the same, uh, this go around. So just point of order, Mr. Crack, Mr. Solicitor, if we were not to approve what's before us tonight, this is an approved project. So what would happen? Would the standing approved project as it, as it existed when we approved it? Go like if this was not approved tonight?
No, this, this is not a standing approved project. You actually approved the, the project. But it was appealed to Chester County Court of Common Pleas. And by agreement, the approval was vacated. So there's nothing presently approved.
And everything that was just presented to us that has changed, the elevator, the ADA apartment being moved up, the handicap lobby, the trash being moved. I do want to ask a little bit to hear a little bit more about the common area. That is all improvement and even things that we encourage you to do. We couldn't by right make you do that, but you've improved that. So really, we're approving tonight, if we do approve this, something that's even better than what's been approved before. Correct? Okay, thank you. Just kind of wanted to put that out there that this is what we kind of wanted. We appreciate that you did that. This is what the community was asking for. So everything that's coming before us tonight are things that have been asked for by the community and improving the project. Could you just tell me a little bit more about the common area? Cause I know that's been a point of contention for the community.
Drawing on the screen or not, but common area is on the first floor, right as you go in.
In what entrance, sir? I'm sorry.
So it's where 209 Church Street.
Okay.
It currently is. It's a one-story piece in the back. That'll become the entrance to the apartments. And then just inside there, there is a kind of a lot, an elevator lobby, plus off to the side, there is a nice meeting room that can handle several people.
So it could be a common area or a, a private meeting space?
It's kind of both. I mean, it's whatever they want to use it for. It's there. And it could be private meetings. It could be a common, uh, you know, gathering, whatnot for, for whoever. You know, so it could be a multipurpose space. Yes.
And then the fire escape has come up quite a few times. So I just wanted to ask about that, where your position is on that, the rationale behind how you're treating it and why?
Sure, sure. The fire escape is existing and we will have it certified as safe. It will be structural. It'll be, you know, re-certified to be put back into use. Um, it is an approved fire escape that would be allowed to be there. Um, and that is our position. We feel that it's a part of the building. It has some nice industrial look to it as well, functionality.
Can you just clarify how many fire escapes there are? Cause I think currently there's three, and I, I believe they were going to remove one. So if you just
Correct, correct. There's actually two main ones, and we are removing one that's in the center of the building. It comes out one of the center windows. Um, the one that is right at the corner of Church and Main that comes off the second floor, third floors, that will remain. But the one that is more towards the back of this, back rear of the building on, on the side of church is the one being removed.
Thank you. Um, and just kind of, you know, this has been a hot topic of me being in this ward. I do really appreciate that we are looking to serve a population that needs to be served. And, you know, no project is perfect. I, I know there's been question with density. It sounds like Chester County, and we had Chester County come to our meeting where it was originally approved and really talk about it. I, you know, taking off my council hat and just my service hat here in this community, I know Phoenixville has a lot of resources and those resources work together. So if we are going to put individuals that had need to be reintegrated back into the community, I do truly believe that Phoenixville is the place to do it because we do band together. We do have nonprofits that serve our people and work together to make sure there aren't gaps in resources for people. So again, I hope that you will do your due diligence and the county will do their due diligence as they should, because this is veteran housing. But I also know that we want to embrace that as a, as a community. And I'm not speaking as council. I'm speaking as a member of this community.
And if I may comment on the dense, the aspect of it, by code, a residential space is allowed to have a, if one person for every 200 square feet. This building has approximately 4,900 square feet per floor. So we're allowed to have 24 people by code on each floor. And we're actually proposing 11, uh, as these are individual units and there'll be 11 units on each of the second, third floors. So I hope that helps put that into perspective as far as the density is concerned.
I'm sorry. Can you repeat that one more time?
Sure, sure. So by the International Building Code, with State Building Code and Phoenixville's boroughs, a building code, we're allowed to have 200 square feet per person. Now, this building is approximately 4,900 square feet on the second and third floors, which if you divide that by the 200 square feet, it gives you 24 occupants. Which are, that's the maximum by code you're allowed to have. Now, we're only proposing 11 single user apartments on each floor. So we're about half of what is allowed by code.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I wanted to ask a couple of people who spoke to us had concerns about services being provided to the veterans. And I don't know if you, as the applicant, can provide that per se. But is the intention to have services made available to, to the residents of this building?
Yes, yes, they will work closely with the VA administration. It's my understanding that there will be meetings held there, council meetings, whatever you want to call it, therapy meetings. That will, uh, each person that resides there will have access to a counselor that they can have individual meetings. And then they can also request an additional meeting as needed as well. So that'll be a case by case basis, sure. But.
Sean, do you think there'd be anything helpful that you could add regarding your, uh, your interactions with the has been before the planning commission many times, your partner in this project with regard to your interaction with the Veterans Administration, the things that were raised today, such as the quality of the apartments and living structure therein, the ability to have resources, the driving, all those issues you had. But I think it's nicely in Borough Council flavor of your actions with the VA.
Absolutely. Yeah. So my partner is Dexon Lanigan. He's a veteran. So he takes great, we take great pride in servicing our veterans. The VA is, we also have a monthly call with the Veteran Association. So we are going to be hands-on, uh, up and above, just as a building owner, to definitely try to help these veterans to get them on, back on their feet. And in any regard, we've had a lot of inquiries from the ground floor retail space, from veteran reaching out programs as such. So we've had a lot of positive activity in regards to even some of our space. In fact, the, our corner retail location that we put with the florist, there, her husband's a veteran. So we've had a lot of great activity and the veterans love this. And our goal was to make it something completely different than they, they're used to having. A little bit more stylish in terms of hallways, some, some really nice architectures, art, things of that nature to really make a, a great quality, healthy living space. So, uh, the, the units themselves are high ceilings, great windows. As you guys know, um, it actually seems a lot larger than what actually, you think of 450, 500 square feet. This is perfect space for them. They don't need more space. It's single occupant use. Their, their goal is to get them back into the community, back and thriving. There are in other facilities around. This is actually a great chance for them to come into an urban environment. So, uh, the, the VA is very excited to be affiliated with this.
Could you just clarify that, that that it's sort of intended to be ultimately a trans, somewhat transitional housing? I, I wasn't sure.
Yeah, I don't speak for exactly the VA and the Housing Authority. However, this project is something a little bit different than their other projects with some different individuals that really are trying to get back into the community. So this was what really excited them. And that's what's something that really why they wanted to sign up with us.
But they, but they would, they would be multi-year tenants. They, they wouldn't, oh yeah, okay. Cause they weren't like live here for a period of time and then seek their own, you know, buy a place or something like that.
Hopefully they'll rent and then they'll go buy a home. You know, that would be great. Um, you know, I think just getting these guys back into, to the workload and the environment, that would, would be phenomenal.
And with regard to the design of the units. I'm sorry. Yeah.
We're doing the Zoom thing.
With regard to the design of the units, I know you sort of mentioned the high ceilings. And I know we've been in great detail before Burke, uh, before the planning commission, but just to let Borough Council know, the involvement that you had in terms of the review of this by the Veterans Administration, to see if it was satisfactory for what they're doing. And also you, I know you've had personal interactions with, uh, Gravitt with regard to the, uh, the, uh, the traffic and parking issues for, for those. Cause there was mentioned earlier, the traffic impact study at every sort of entity that I believe you've approached, just said traffic, it backed the parking four or five cars. But others come from you as.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think they would want to sign a 20-year lease with us if, if that was the case. So I mean, they, they definitely want the building. They, they don't think there's an issue with the traffic that to, to answer that. Uh, in regards to the space itself, numerous other projects that I've been involved in, we, we converted an old parish in East Falls that we did the same type of unit with a stacked, uh, a stacked open space, open floor plan, uh, which is, which is what, uh, we have John to, to design. And it's actually a really awesome space. And the way it lays out, it's really open. It's really wide open. Actually, when you walk up through a stairwell to get to the second loft style to it. So it's actually looks a lot larger than it is. And it utilizes efficient, it makes sense. You know, I, I don't know what else. Any other questions on, on the layout or the, the design?
My only point of that question, sorry. My only point of that question was just, I don't want there to be my only point of that question was I didn't want there to be a concern that this is something, I heard some, some euphemisms for the applicant earlier. This is not something that was just done and thrown together without consent, without resorting to the people who are going to be using it and the organizations that are going to be servicing it. And that, that's all I was getting at. They're not rehashing that. This is not the builder coming in and doing as little as possible, get as many units in somewhere. This is serving a need with the people who are managing it and know what they're talking about and know what they're doing and the impact it does, it does have.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to add, it, it is not lost on me that you are reopening these windows. And you're proposing to restore the, the street, the original, the street fund facade as close to the original as you can. I, I think that's, um, I, I think that's a, a good thing that you're taking the coverings off those windows. They're going to be real windows again. It will look more like it was when it was first, the Masonic Hall back in 1890s or whatever. And also, I know.
Young man.
And also, um, I, I know some had, had made a comment about the size of the apartments, 400 square feet. And I just wanted to add, when I, when I made that transition away from roommates into my first apartments, the second of which was here in Phoenixville. If I had 400 square feet, my head would have exploded with all the, with all the, the area I would have had to live in. Because I, I think those apartments were like 300 square feet. So, um, I don't know. I just wanted, want to add that, that the 400 square feet doesn't seem bad to me.
I mean, I know, our last, sorry, the last time around, we talked, I, I think there was a recommendation about, for one, the elevator, which added a ton of square footage for us to add some common basement space for the trash and for the washer dryers. We also had an area for storage. So, you know, we are addressing all concerns, even when it is a 450, 500 square foot unit to give them some space themselves if they need to store something, you know, bikes or what have you. So we're really trying to do our best to accommodate all, all requests from our last time around.
Yeah, I'm sorry. And John said, they're actually.
I'm sorry, and John said they're actually much larger than four hundred square feet. They're somewhere to five seventy five, six hundred square feet. So it's not as if they're just four hundred square feet. I don't think any of them are actually four hundred. They're they're all four fifty plus, but.
Would have been living large back in those days, man.
I I think most of us have had apartments that size before. Other questions for the applicant? I mean, I, as Rich has mentioned, and I know you have gone through HARB and been approved for the actual exterior treatment for the stair and elevator tower. I think those are both great additions. I I appreciate you, you know, coming, coming around on some of these items. As you mentioned, the trash and recycling is in, you know, in the basement now because of the elevator access. And I think you also had some basement storage for the tenants. Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. So I mean, in the resolution, we do have item F and that's, that's the item that you're you're mentioning, having some contest with. I'm torn on this one. I I it's a. Yeah, we we have revamped it to be more more debate, you know, you know, less stringent than what it originally was. We've come down to to something where we we essentially come to an agreement as to what the what the required number could be, since we're not placing a number on it at this time. I'm not, I I don't know. I understand what you're stating with the de facto. So I'm not going to die on the hill for this one. I do think it is prudent to maintain the relationship wherever that would be for parking. But we're talking about five cars and I understand that and I trust Dale as he has done this job tremendously well for the county for a number of years. So his letter does carry a lot of weight, from my opinion at least.
And I'll offer, I'll trust that you have a good relationship with First Presbyterian. And they said they would make those spots available. I appreciate the distinction between making it a condition and then you having some kind of document with them and and not. I mean, granted, who knows, a few years down the line, Presbyterian could sell that piece land. There's no guarantees there either, but then.
And that leads to concern. I think, let Sean say this, but if applicant's complete intention at the time of use occupancy to say, oh, we have five or seven people here who have cars. By the way, Borough, here is the agreement we have with them. The issue simply becomes, I hate to do this because of Borough and so cooperative throughout the process. There is a give and take, as we've pointed out, Mr. President, in terms of working on and making changes and conditions. But from my perspective, from a legal perspective, and and very respectfully, you know, Mr. Garner has been made aware of this and has been and has been very very helpful in terms of understanding our position here. It is that, it's that issue. It's making it a condition essentially changes the zone to require parking as properly. It does equal a value proposition. A building needs parking or doesn't need parking adds value. But also to someone who might come down the road, Mr. Alliance pointed out, they're lengthy lease. This is not something to look at flip this project in twelve months or twelve weeks and do it. They have a lengthy lease there and having this condition that would potentially apply, I don't know if it would apply, but then are we in litigation to find out if second or third orders must also keep our friendly relationship with First Presbyterian and there may not be this demand and need for cars. So it wasn't a truculent or extreperous way to get in the way and say, you can't make us do it. We're not doing it. It just seemed something that'll be very difficult to agree to for a problem that hasn't presented itself yet. Our hope has been that continued open correspondence, communication with the Borough can happen. So if it is three and a half years down the road, and First Presbyterian decides to renovate or expand or something else, that we have that conversation with the Borough and say, okay, we've got these four residents with cars. We're going to look for something else here. Can we do that? That's every intention. But the condition is something that frankly I rose, raised as an issue with regard to to the parking, particularly at Mr. Oss. You know, with you that said.
Mr. President? I'm sorry. I don't think this is that onerous of a condition. It says at the time of the receipt of a certificate of occupancy permit agrees to provide evidence of a parking lease acceptable to the Borough. I I think that's, that's a very low bar to clear. And it and it provides some some peace of mind that that the parking, any potential parking issue is going to be addressed. I don't think, I don't think it even costs any more money to get that. You know, it probably requires a lease you can download online from wherever and, you know, get the church to sign it and you present it at the time of certificate of occupancy. Where, so we're not talking of three, four, or five years down the road. It's the receipt of a certificate of occupancy. It's a one-time deal. I I just, I just don't think it's that onerous. And if it were to come out, I don't think I'd vote for this.
That's, that's the question, I suppose. I understand that leaving it flexible was to sort of create that sense of communication back and forth and open communication. I think if it were to say that, that this is a one-time requirement at the time of use of occupancy, you know, pursuant to this plan, is that something that'll be amenable to you? Because right now, I do believe the First Presbyterian Church, we have an agreement with them that says we will do this. And if that's what it is, I think that is something that we can work out. Respectfully, I know there's been a lot of trust in going back and forth with conditions and working out improvements for this property here, you know, something that's acceptable to one party as Mr. Gardner, for sure, would advise you in the law, makes it unilateral on one party. I assure you, we don't have concerns that this council is going to say, oh, acceptable to us now, you can occupancy. We want forty eight spots and we want it for twenty years. That's something obviously that open ended, that that's my concern as the attorney is. It is sort of a little bit vague. It is open-ended, giving the Borough sort of all the power in the world to decide what's reasonable or not. If the issue is or can be resolved by something as simple as at the time of use of occupancy, upon approval, this approval, the applicant shows it has parking spots or an agreement for the parking spots for these, for these tenants who require it, that's fine. And I completely agree with you, Mr. Krieger. It's not a big issue, the writing the issue or having the conversation. It's finding enough spots either now or down the road. Because, like I said, if there's a five, there's a rent a five spot lot across the street for a hundred bucks a month, I think probably that would be an easy condition to agree to. But the the ongoing obligation to have to find parking, 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 parking is the is the part that gets us a little.
So let me, let me just be clear and chuck and slap me if I say this the wrong way. But this says is at the time of the certificate of occupancy, you're going to provide evidence of a parking lease acceptable to the Borough. Very, very vague. And for the residents that need it at that time. If you think for a moment that I'm going to be the parking police after the day that that is reviewed, we've got a, we've got a different thought. So that's why it's written that way. It's, it's, it's not saying at one time, but it is a one time. I'm not going to come back two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine times and go every year, knock, 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 where's your lease? You provided it to me at the time you got the certificate of occupancy. That's what this says. That's what they're agreeing to. I I see no harm, no foul.
Which, which unless I'm mistaken, it's a one-time event when you get your certificate of occupancy, so.
I think that that, you know, like, just it's it's wording and I think it was something along lines of at the time of initial, initial use of occupancy permit would be helpful to down the road. If it's years down the road and these members and these people here aren't, aren't, anyone reading that down the road will look at it and say, okay, it says use of occupancy. Well, if this gets sold to someone in seven years.
It says at the time of receipt of the certificate of occupancy, we only issue that one time.
Okay. Okay. And so I suppose then the only thing then is, I believe, Sean, you were talking about the number, would it be, would it be the number of, you know, to the satisfaction of the Borough? We say we have X number of tenants who require parking. Here's the seven people that require parking. Here's the seven spaces. I think that's something that's, that's workable.
We were able to negotiate a short-term parking for twenty two spaces. So I think the First Presbyterian has numerous spaces that are available and any one of us can rent in that space right now. And we were able to come to terms with them. Or at least the the issue was how long? You know, I would love to lock in a really long term, because I don't think they would want to lock in a long-term lease. So the point of it is, is if four people want this, want to want a parking space, we have it available for them. If the other eighteen don't don't need it, are are we required to have that on each lease at age? They don't want this parking.
What this says is if you, if you right now, and you've said this to them, you have a lease that that has a lot more parking spots with First Presbyterian. Right now, you have that. You had that agreement. I don't know if it's twenty. I don't know if it's twenty two. All we're saying is at the time of receipt of the certificate of occupancy, you show that you've got parking for the tenants. If even if it's twenty two, it's done.
We agree, we would agree to that.
That solves that problem then.
Great. Anything else? Rich, does that settle your concerns on the parking?
Yeah, I I mean, I, you know, I think it's, the language is is clear and vague at the same time. It's, it's clear in that it's a one-time deal. At the certificate, certificate, certificate of occupancy. And but it's vague as to what the parameters of that that lease agreement are.
And with these.
It could be one year, three years, whatever.
These certifications I can take care of, Rich.
Any other questions or comments for the applicant on this project? Great. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven, one.
Thank you, everyone. And thank you for your patience. Thank you for your patience in doing this twice.
Thank you for your time. Really appreciate it. With that, we'll move on to Mr. Weiss with HARB.
Yes, excitedly. I would like to make a motion to consider the approval of certificate of appropriateness for a sign request for one twelve Bridge Street as recommended in HARB. Four to zero per the action memo dated December sixth, twenty twenty one.
Motion by Mr. Weiss, second by Mr. Moore. Questions on the motion or the application?
Actually, I have a quick question. What is this company? What do they do?
I believe it's some kind of like eyebrow waxing type.
Oh, okay. Because I was looking at the name of it and I was just like, hmm, what are they?
Yeah, not a service that I take part in, but certainly one that the community will benefit from.
Okay, thank you.
Maybe you would too.
Very good. Any other questions on the application? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight, zero. Anything else, Mr. Weiss?
Yes, just that our next meeting will be on Monday, the third at five P M.
Of January.
Of January, yes.
With that, Mr. Krieger, Regional Planning Committee?
There's not much happening there. At the last meeting on December eighth, which would have been last Wednesday, there was a workshop of the Trail Advisory Committee after, after the regular committee meeting, Regional Planning Committee meeting. I didn't hang around for it, so I don't know what happened there, but but they had it anyway.
Thank you, Rich. With that, Rec Board, Ms. Dugan?
There's a couple of things going on. We have the Family Fun and Fitness on Sundays from December fifth to February second at Patnaddle Field from two thirty to three thirty. It's basically a gym class. It's run around and totally family friendly. Then there's Snapology on Tuesdays from January eighteenth to March eighth at the Civic Center for ages four to seven from four thirty to five thirty. The Combat Robots, that's from seven to fourteen, ages seven to fourteen, from five forty five to seven. And there's the Teen Workshop, all Teen Yoga Workshop. It's teens ages thirteen nineteen can learn techniques to be more confident, sleep better and be more calm. And on that's on Sundays, on on Sunday, January ninth. That's one day thing from four to five thirty at the Civic Center. And then finally, there is a family night out, but it's more like a night in because it's virtual. December eighteenth at seven P M. To make a holiday ornament. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Dugan. Mr. Soto with BAC? Thank you. Ms. Berkeley with TAC?
Nothing to report.
And with that, we'll go to Police Personnel, Ms. Berkeley.
Yes, so our first meeting of the new year will be January third and we know that's going to be a busy night.
Parks and Rec, Mr. Soto?
Parks and Rec did not meet last month, will not be meeting in December, but we will see you in the new year.
Thank you. Mr. Dalton, final policy update?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. I have two items out of policy. The first item would be no action to consider. And the second item would be I'd like to say hi to my mom who's tuning in from Maine for my last meeting. So, hi, Mom.
Hi, Liz Dalton.
Thank you, Jeremy.
Nothing further. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Weiss with I T T?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Nothing to report at this time. Our next meeting will be January eighteenth, seven P M.
Ms. Dugan with Finance?
All right, I have got, given the fact that four is something we normally do, I am bundling all four of them. I'd like to make a motion to approve the twenty twenty one prepaid dated ten one twenty twenty one to ten thirty one twenty twenty one in the amount of four million, three hundred eighty eight thousand, six hundred fifty nine dollars and sixty cents. Prove the twenty twenty one prepaid credit card statement dated ten one twenty twenty one to ten thirty one twenty twenty one in the amount of eighty eight thousand, seven hundred and six dollars and eighty five cents. To approve the twenty twenty one prepaid A C H dated ten thirty one twenty twenty one in the amount of thirty eight thousand, five hundred and three dollars and fifty four cents. And finally, to approve the staff recommends, recommendation authorizing the finance director to make the necessary end of year adjustments to provide and provide a listing of those adjustments to the finance committee and the Borough Borough's auditor.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Dugan, second by Mr. Weiss. Questions on this motion, this bundled set of four motions? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight, zero. With that, we are going to need a motion to go into executive session and we will be coming back for a voting item.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Soto. We are going into executive session to discuss personnel and contracts. Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Soto, we are going into executive session to discuss, uh, personnel and contracts. Okay, thank you very much. We are now back from executive session, uh, per act eighty-four, we discussed, uh, personnel and contract language. Um, with that, we had, um, moved item four C, uh, for that discussion, so, uh, what is council's pleasure? I believe we, we had a motion standing, um, by Ms. So, motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Dalton, questions on the motion? And just a reminder, that motion was to, uh, the employment agreement for Police Chief effect, effective January first, twenty twenty-two. Questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries eight, zero, welcome Chief Marshall, we look forward to working with you. With that, we will, uh, open up our second and final round of public participation for twenty twenty-one. Any members in the audience wishing to make public participation during this final round of public participation? Please raise your hand digitally and staff will, uh, announce it on you. If there's nobody in the audience, or nobody in the virtual audience, is there anybody in our physical audience wishing to make a dress? Seeing none, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Weiss, all in favor? Happy New Year, folks, we'll see you in twenty twenty-two.
Bye, Kelly.